Broadcast has been set.
Thank you. Okay, the time is now five oh five and the December nineteen two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governors Committee meeting will come to order. So we'll start with item one point two welcoming and opening remarks for myself, well, the vice chair. So good evening and welcome to the December nineteen two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governors Committee meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, the Policy and Governors Committee Vice Chair and member of the board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. We will now have introductions of our committee members, starting with the board members, followed by administration staff, then board office staff and the board legal counsel. So I'll turn it over to our first committee member, Ms. Lolita Walker. Who seems to not be here right now. So I'm going to turn it over to Z Miller.
This is Juanita, not Z.
Juanita Miller, thank you so much.
Okay, that's it. I'm the board member.
Great.
I am Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board and Ex officia member of this committee.
Okay, and then we'll turn to the administration staff.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Andy Zuckman, Chief Information Officer. Thank you for having us.
Good evening, everyone. Trenell Bowman, Associate Superintendent for Special Education.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Robertson, Director of Technology Integration and Support.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Thomas and I'm a Regional Technology Coordinator with the Technology Training Team.
Boy, remember Briggs, I'm sorry. I don't see Lolita's name.
She's now, she's, she's, she just, so Vice Chair Walker, if you can introduce yourself briefly and then we'll turn it over to Ms. Adeline, so we can get started.
Absolutely. Hey, everybody. I'm Lolita E. Walker. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Education. It's exciting to be here tonight for policy and governance. Look forward to the conversation.
Sorry, Mr. Whitley.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Whitley, the third Law Offices of Shipley and Horn, and we are board counsel.
Good evening, everyone. Cindy Adeline, Administrative Secretary to the Board Office.
Great. Thank you so much again, everyone, for joining tonight, taking time to be here. We really appreciate it. So colleagues, before I call for a motion to accept the agenda for tonight, please be aware that it will be very, it will vary slightly. So after item two point O, we'll consider items four point one, which is our artificial intelligence policy, and then four point two, Policy seventeen hundred Disabilities Issues Advisory Board. This is being done to accommodate the schedules of our visiting speakers, which we're very grateful for. So may I have a motion to adopt the December nineteen two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governors Committee meeting agenda as amended?
Some move, Mr. Chair, to adopt the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any objections? Okay, hearing none. The motion passes. The December nineteen two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governors Committee meeting agenda is amended and adopted. So we'll now move to item one point four, approval of the committee meeting minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the November fourteen two thousand twenty-three Policy and Governors Committee meeting minutes?
I guess I so move, Mr. Chair, to approve the minutes for the, give me the date again.
November fourteen twenty twenty-three.
The November fourteenth committee meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Can I, after this motion, I have a question. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The November fourteen twenty twenty-three Policy and Governors Committee meeting minutes are approved. Before I move to public comments, I'll turn to Vice Chair Walker for your question quickly.
Yes, it's just a quick question. I just want to, if you could just tell me who the members of the Policy and Governance Committee are that's on the line. The reason is because I'm driving and I'm happy to second each and every one of the motions. It's just gonna be a little tough for me to get, so just wait for pause if it's myself and Dr. Miller.
Right now, it's yourself and Dr. Miller, so we would have created it if you could do it.
No worries. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we're going to move on to two point O, public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. There are two registered public comment speakers this evening. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded using video or audio or written. To the registered speakers, you've been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the committee will listen to your comments. The committee will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentations. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you will be removed from the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, Principal, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. So we will now hear public comments from speakers on the agenda and non-agenda items. Our first speaker this evening is Dolores Milhouse, P C A Committee, to address Policy fifteen hundred. And I know that we, I know that we had a few tech issues, so I do want to say, Ms. Adeline, do you see Ms. Milhouse in the queue?
Yeah, she's on. I'm here.
Oh, great. Okay, great. All right, well, we will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here again, and I'm hoping that we could have some movement on finalizing Policy fifteen hundred and really understanding the importance of having this, not only because it is outlined in the law that we should have this, but because, as you all have spoken very clearly on several meetings about your commitment to engagement and really seeing the parent as a partner in education, I am hoping that you all could move forward in really understanding that it needs to be something that's not just a checkoff, but that you really are moving in your actions to support it. I do appreciate the work that this committee has come together to pull in a few more pieces that help clarify what the roles are for the liaisons, what that looks like as it also relates to the recommendation of individuals from the community. I would also encourage you all to make sure that when there is a vacancy, such as the six vacancies that we have right now, that the board moves expeditiously to move forward with advertising these vacancies to the community, making sure that individuals are very aware of it, going through the process so that we are not in jeopardy of being able to meet because we don't have a quorum due to the vacancies. So I am encouraging this committee to do more of an active role of not only moving this policy forward, but making sure that it is very clear of what the liaison's roles are, how they support the committee. They are not to interfere, but to allow the channels of communication to stay open. But there's a true commitment from the board, the individuals that you align as liaisons, to understand that when you act in the role of engagement, that you understand it from an equitable standpoint, in that we do it based on the common goal of supporting the needs of the student. So I am hoping that during the discussion, you all could finalize certain things, as we talked about, like a parent who may have a twelfth grade student. But whatever the decisions that are made, that everything that we do, we do it in a position of supporting the needs of the student by engaging the parent, who was the first teacher in this partner in education with you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Britt Milhouse. We will now move to Ms. Shannon Reed, speaking as an individual, about increasing accountability and responsibility. So I will turn it over to Ms. Shannon Reed.
Good evening. Teachers, learners, and basic materials are essential for learning. The extras have increased, but ninety percent of my students last year read far, far below grade level at the beginning of the school year. This brings to the forefront the need for policies and practices that ensure the development of teachers and learners inside the classroom. Currently, people outside the classroom have received incalculable rewards far beyond the compensation teachers inside the classroom receive. Millions have been spent on software like the Achieve Three Thousand Reading Intervention Program, which the students in my two lab classes routinely use. Yet forty percent of the forty, yet forty and forty-seven percent of the students in the two English ten lab classes passed their English ten MCAP, but the school's average was fifty-one point five percent for English. Superficial engagement with instructional tools concealed the learning process for many students, producing completion, not mastery, confusion, not competence. In contrast, fifteen of twenty-three or sixty-eight percent of the students in my one A class scored the required seven fifty or higher to pass. Six students scored seven forty-four through seven forty-eight and one student scored seven thirty-six. Nineteen of twenty-two students or eighty-six percent in my two A class passed the English ten MCAP. Eight of the nineteen who passed were black males, two were Hispanic. Two of the three students who scored below the required seven fifty scored between seven forty-three and seven forty-eight, and one scored seven thirty-two. Nine of twenty-two students or forty percent in my one B class who worked harder to get me fired than on developing their knowledge and skills passed their English ten MCAP. Otherwise, the fifty percent who scored between seven thirty and seven forty-nine would have likely passed the test. One student did not take the test and one chronically absent student scored seven twenty-five. Five of the twenty-three or twenty-one percent of my two B class earned a passing score. Eleven of the twenty-three or forty-seven percent came within ten points of passing. One student scored seven thirty-six and one student scored seven fourteen. Since technology-based intervention produced less growth and development than highly skilled teacher-led reading and writing instruction embedded in grade level work, it is important that at-risk readers receive high-quality instruction from highly qualified teachers. However, teachers like me are being crushed by the weight of too many students with tremendous needs. I am simply beyond exhausted. This points to the need for effective data analysis for all learners so that there are scheduling and instructional changes for struggling learners. Students with low benchmark scores or underdeveloped reading skills need English and math every day with the same teacher in order to develop grade level skills and knowledge. This extends the time to complete obviously challenging grade level work. Moreover, these learners need additional opportunities to develop and demonstrate college and career readiness on high-stakes tests. Two retakes of state-mandated tests like the MCAP makes sense in terms of creating equity. It also shifts the focus from grades to growth. This requires the development of teachers and learners. Students are absolutely capable of doing well and need policies and practices that reflect this truth. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reed, for joining us. Colleagues, a really quick request, just for housekeeping. If you could make sure that you're muted when you're not speaking, so that we don't have any background noise, it's really appreciated. And then also, just for our board staff, I'm sorry, if our board staff, if you could ensure that the timer's up and reset once speakers are done, so that we can have an equitable time distribution for everyone. I see a hand, so I'm going to really quickly acknowledge Board Member Adam Stafford. If you're speaking, Board Member Adam Stafford, we can't hear you, but.
I just wanted to be added as a panelist. That was all. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I do. Sorry, I want to acknowledge Board Member Adam Stafford and Board Member Routh, who have joined us. Thank you so much for being here this evening. So we're going to now move to consideration of items four point one and four point two. The first policy is artificial intelligence. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to introduce her guest and to provide the committee with an update on the new policy, artificial intelligence. Ms. Welsh, Mrs. Welsh.
Good evening. So we're very fortunate this evening to have with us the Chief of Information Technology, Dr. Zuckerman, as well as the Director of Integration and I think it's Professional Support. It's a new department in that division, which is Kimberly Robertson and Dr. Sarah Thomas, who is a coordinator, which instruct, I think instructional coordinator that supports the work that's being done with technology and AI in the classroom. And so I asked them if they would please come and share with all of you information about techno, about AI in terms of pros and cons for the school system, but also what the school system is actually doing. Because as, as I told you last time, I did a lot, kept doing research, and then this time I kept doing more research, but I found out that our school system really has been engaged and is moving forward with AI. So I think it's important to share with all of you, and then if you have any other questions, and then we can go to the actual policy.
Great, thanks so much. So it sounds like Dr. Zuckerman, it's on the floor, the spotlight's on you, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the chance just to do a very, very brief overview. So thank you, committee members. I want to introduce Ms. Kim Robertson and Dr. Sarah Thomas. As, as Ms. Welsh said, they are, in my opinion, some of the most innovative thought leaders in instructional technology and technology in schools. And so I'm delighted that they're here to share, because we are doing some really exciting things. And I believe we're in the vanguard, certainly in the state and the region with where we are with respect to AI. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Robertson to just share, and then we can get into the policy and work through any questions and comments you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Zuckerman, and thank you, board members, for, again, the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon, and thank you to Mrs. Walsh for the invitation. You can advance the slide. We recognize that the board is very forward-thinking in their thought process. Again, thank you for saying the need to develop a policy around AI. So I wanted to start briefly by sharing that I am very entrenched in technology, particularly instructional technology. However, I am not an expert in artificial intelligence. My knowledge continues to grow, but I wanted to offer just a brief history of some of the most important advancements in AI, particularly to let you know that the term was initially used in the nineteen fifty, so it's a terminology that is not new. By and large, there were opportunities to train machines on the use of artificial intelligence and models that impacted artificial intelligence even before the nineteen fifties. So it's an old discipline. However, it remained largely in the computer science field. However, as we approached the early two thousands, we started to see the advancement of AI and machine learning and things of that nature because of the vast amounts of data that existed online. So if you start to think about what may have started to happen in your life around the two thousands, I'll say for me, I moved from, and I'll say maybe in late nineties, I moved from using a map to move from place to place, to travel from place to place, to maybe tools like MapQuest that I had to print before leaving, and then, of course, we started to advance to things like Waze or Google Maps. So we see the use of large data sets and how it shifted what we were doing as it relates to data and artificial intelligence. So things like Siri, Alexa, all use AI. So with those things in mind, we recognize that AI has been discussed, particularly in computer science classrooms, information technology courses in Prince George's County prior to this year. So why are we here? Why are we now discussing AI? Why do we see the need to have a policy around AI? Well, in particular, last November twenty twenty-two, the media particularly, we started to see the advancement of a tool called Chat GPT. Chat GPT was introduced by a company called OpenAI, who was using a large language model. At that time, it was GPT three or three point five to process natural language. So what ended up happening is it made AI more accessible for us, for people like us. So we were able to execute a prompt or write a prompt into a tool like Chat GPT and allow it to give us information back or to generate information. So here, we started to think differently about how artificial intelligence can be used outside of some of the industries that we have typically seen it in, for example, finance or medicine or even in commercial spaces. Now, regular, everyday people are now beginning to use large language models such as Chat GPT or GPT three, now even four. So as we move forward to the next slide, the intention, which I think this is a static image, was to show you how Chat GPT works in the event that you had not seen it. So in a sense, with Chat GPT, it allows the user to enter what's called a prompt, a little bit different than what we might do as it relates to a Google search. But with that prompt, you're able, in this particular example, the user was entering a prompt to help write a lesson plan. And as it continued, the, the response came back to say, well, I'm not able to give you a lesson plan, but I can give you some general information to help with your lesson plan. And the prompt engineer or the person who is writing the prompt can continue to tailor their response to gain back specific information. It requires some level of thought, some level of skill, to think about the way that that prompt is engineered or created, to be able to refine it, to get the information that we need. The information isn't always accurate, right? So as we continue forward, when this was introduced, you can go to the next slide, many of us started to feel differently. Some of us automatically were excited. We saw the possibilities. Most of us, some of us, may have been excited because you started to see, well, how is this going to help me? How can this help me improve my professional productivity? You might think of some task that you might need assistance with, for example, crafting emails or writing memos or writing letters, which may turn to a fear, right? So some of us were fearful. We didn't understand what this language model was able to do. We weren't interested in it collecting our data, so maybe we just wanted to stay away from it. And then others even may have been just curious and not really sure what it could do, maybe have been skeptical. So automatically, when we start to think about these questions in an educational space, we want to begin to apply them, not just to us and our professional productivity, but to our students. I heard on the last call, the question around plagiarism. So if it can help me write a memo, I'm sure it could help our students write an essay, for example. So what do we do? What can we do differently to help people understand the concept around plagiarism? Well, a few things that could happen. There are plagiarism checkers. I will say that there is no plagiarism checker that is one hundred percent dependable. But we can begin to train teachers and other staff members on looking at the language that it is supplied through a tool that uses AI to help them identify, are there particular things about this, this language that would show that this is developed by AI? And of course, AI can develop not just language, but it can develop images. It can develop code. It can develop different types of content. So being able to help people understand what that language model can provide and to look for examples of plagiarism is important. And of course, for our students, we can, we need to continue to help them understand digital citizenship and being able to use the resources that we provide for them safely and accurately and equitably. And of course, responsibly is important. We also know that our data is being collected constantly. We talked about the different ways that we may have used GPS in the past. For example, we had to put in an address of where we were going. Sometimes we don't always think about that box that we have to check before using an application. However, from an education space, we are stewards of data, so we need to be able to read carefully those terms of service, to be able to look at those privacy policies more carefully, to be able to see where that data is going, where it resides. Is it even useful or beneficial for a particular student of a certain age to be able to use that particular tool? So that's what we are now looking at to be responsible for stewards of data. Another piece that we would look at is the opportunity to influence a STEM field, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics that has historically been underrepresented for students of color. So we have an opportunity to think more equitably about how our data is used and who is using our data, who is training on the use of our data. Is there an opportunity for us to influence the way that our students are not just using the data, but perhaps influencing the use of the tool or the development of the tool? So as we move forward to the next slide, I wanted to very briefly talk about some of the things that we've been doing, particularly this year, once AI became available for the general public. We have formed some partnerships, and Dr. Thomas can talk very briefly about some of those partnerships, particularly around how we've been piloting and gathering feedback from stakeholders. So I'll allow her to talk a little bit about some of the items that we've been doing on this slide, and I'll wrap up with some of the additional things.
Hello, everyone. Good evening again. So a pleasure to be here with you all today. Thank you so much, Ms. Robertson. So just one thing that I wanted to share with you all before we dive into this slide. We did a professional learning day on October twentieth of this year, and educators were allowed to select a professional learning that interested them. So we did, our department did a day of AI among several other topics, and we had over nine hundred unique participants attending over fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred logins. So that kind of speaks to the amount of curiosity about artificial intelligence that we have in our district. And it was, in, in my opinion, it was a great success because there were these conversations that were incredibly rich that you could see taking place in real time. And one person even said that prior to the presentation, they had a negative opinion of AI as a means of plagiarism. However, after the presentation that they attended, then they saw that, they saw the power in it and using it as a student-centered approach to create engaging lessons. And they said that AI has now won them over. So lots of powerful takeaways from that day, and since then, we've had more sessions in our district with, with educators. So as Ms. Robertson said, then we have formed partnerships with, with one of them in particular, then we meet fairly regularly, and we are currently talking about continuing the professional learning work that we're offering in our district, as well as expanding it to several other stakeholders. Ms. Welsh would be able to speak a little later about the, the policy, and we're also developing vetting guidance, so the teachers are able to self-check before they utilize any artificial intelligence tools. So we have some guidelines in place for them to just be able to, to make sure that the tool is appropriate for, for use. We're currently also working on our multi-year AI framework, so just looking at a strategic plan for the future. And we're gathering feedback from various stakeholders from different divisions, different departments. And so this is on the left-hand side, I think that that's what I'm most able to speak to. So I'm going to pass it back to Ms. Robertson if she wanted to have any additional remarks on, on the right-hand side.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. So sure. So some of the, some of the, the mentions that I heard from the previous meeting were around allowing or inviting higher education. I think Dr. Z Miller mentioned inviting higher education to the table. And we see opportunities for that with our partnerships, as well as, as we are developing the multi-year AI framework. That was done actually in collaboration with academics and IT. So we have formed that partnership and, and the writing of that AI framework, and we welcome other individuals to the table to help influence our thinking. I'm excited about the opportunity to have a policy, particularly to review it on a regular basis. Five minutes before this meeting, someone sent me a new guideline that showed that now we have eight states, in addition to the two that have released guidance around AI at their state level, their state agency level, which I did not know until today, five minutes before this meeting. So I appreciate having the opportunity to continue to come back to this work, because we are still, we have some questions about a few things, which is what you can see on the gray box on the right-hand side, to be able to continue to look at new guide, new guidance that has been developed from other stakeholders across the nation. Taking a look at our infrastructure needs and determining what shifts we may need to make internally to ensure that we keep safety at the forefront, equity at the forefront, intentionality at the forefront, as well as innovation. We want to be able to continue to move the work forward with, but with those core values in mind. One thing in particular that we're looking at is our relationship with vendors. With our, right now, with our staff, they're, they are able to use AI for them personally, which is where our professional learning resides, more so with. which is where our professional learning resides more so with the staff. However, with students currently, they are, AI tools are not open directly to them. However, we are encouraged by vetting, as Dr. Thomas mentioned. The particular tools that we already have approved in Prince George County for instructional use. However, some of them are now starting to embed AI. So we want to be able to look really closely at that to see how they are, if they are making any adjustments to their privacy policy, so that we can have an opportunity to look more closely at how that impacts our students and their learning. And of course, we're continuing to have conversations with our stakeholders. As you've heard, we are, in some cases, piloting individual tools with groups of teachers. We have one example in visual arts where they piloted a particular AI tool to provide feedback to find out whether it was valuable for them, whether it was safe and the core values that we just mentioned. So this is some of the work that we've been working to do this year. We're going to continue to refine that work and look for guidance across, not just in Prince George County, but across the state of Maryland and looking at other states to see where we're moving as it relates to AI. But we thank you for the opportunity to share with you where we are, where we hope to go and to receive your continued guidance as it relates to the policy. Thank you.
And Ms. Welsh, I believe we're going to turn it back over to you for a rundown of the policy, correct?
Yes, unless there's are any questions or if you want me to do the policy first and then.
I would prefer we do the policy first and ask colleagues to hold on to questions and kind of bifurcate the two. So you got the, you got the policy.
Okay, Cindy, could you please put the post the policy, please? So this is, this is the policy that I shared last month. However, I did make changes to based on the information that you all had, the questions that you actually asked and information you provided, as well as additional information that I did receive from from information technology. So if you scroll down, please, I'll just point out the changes. And like I did the last time, I highlighted them since the the policy is, the whole thing is brand new. But I did make some additional changes. So I did define who were stakeholders since we referenced stakeholders in the policy. I did include, there was a recommendation for to have higher ed and students be invited to the work group that that is created, not at every meeting, but periodically or whenever subjects come up where they want input from the higher ed and students. So I said, where appropriate, the work group will invite PGCPs students and representatives from higher ed to discuss specific topics being addressed by the work group. And then if you proceed further down, the work group shall address the following characteristics of AI and the acquisition of AI. And then I, all this additional stuff was, I thought, everything, all the bullets were there previously. But I thought it might be helpful to have just a little bit more information that sort of explains what each of these are. So I did add a little more depth into the policy to explain that. And if you keep scrolling down, Cindy, and then if you get to the last one, and Kimberly did refer to this. I did add that the work group will look at requirements for ed tech vendors to explicitly explicitly disclose the integration of AI within their products. Because that is a concern when they do end up integrating into a product that we don't even realize that they are using AI. And initially, when we first first purchased the product, there wasn't any AI and now there is. So that that will be an important piece. And also, IT, if you see something here, Kimberly or or Andy or Sarah, please don't hesitate to say, maybe we need to make a change. I did say appropriate professional development will be made available to all staff utilizing AI. And professional development may include but not limited to, and then that just lays that out. And the reason I did that was because we do have a lot of mandatory trainings, which have to do with a lot of safety issues within the school system. So this would not fall into that arena, but it will be very easy for any employee to access it. And I would think that as they start to use AI, they're probably going to want to do the training because it'll give them more information of what to, what they can use with the AI, AI, how they can use it. And then if you, I also include, and this gives you some idea what the training would include. And then I have use of AI will not replace teaching of classroom teachers, but instead will be used as a supplemental tool by teachers. And then if you proceed a little bit further down, I have, it is the responsibility of staff to check the accuracy of the information provided by an by an AI platform. And I did want to point out, so someone had brought up about putting some language in about plagiarism. But if you, could you scroll up just a tiny bit, Cindy? It says here, let me see if I can find it. Any use of AI must be cited to as any other source and may not be submitted as the original work. So that actually was there and it does go to the whole idea of plagiarism that you have to cite it like any other source that you would cite in the work that you're doing. And then the number ten is collaboration, collaboration with the wider AI community by promoting knowledge sharing, best practice, participation, and initiatives that aim to advance ethical AI development. And then I think if you scroll a bit further down, I don't know if, one more, I have the, this policy, one of the, one of you asked that we do this annually. And I think it's a great idea. This policy will be reviewed, assessed, and revised by the board annually based on evolving technologies, ethical considerations, and feedback. Oh, that's not, I should be stakeholders, not stakeholders. So I'll correct that. But anyway, so that's, that is what the changes I made based on your recommendations at the last meeting. So any questions?
Great. Thanks so much, Ms. Welsh. So now what I'll do is we'll open the floor for discussion and comments. And I just want to say again, there's the two parts. So just if you can clarify who you want to pose your question to as you're asking it, then we'll make sure we get the the correct answer. So I'm going to turn it over to our committee members first and then board members who are here. Also want to acknowledge that I see that student member of the board Rivera Forbes has joined, as well as board member Azapora Miller. So thanks so much for joining. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Walker to start us off.
Hi there. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And Ms. Welsh, I sincerely apologize for not getting that scholarly work to you. I will. But I don't think it'll change what we're doing today. So thank you. Seems like you've already reached out for some academic input anyway, so I'm excited about that. I guess my question is a two part. One, the latter is for Ms. Welsh. But the first, I apologize for not remembering you guys' names who presented first. It was very thorough. Thank you. One of the questions I have is, have we considered partnering with some vendors upfront? So let's take ChatGPT. We're hoping AI is the company, the parent. Have we considered partnering with them in order to help them with prompts and responses? And the reason why I say that is because I think we know that AI responses sometimes can be biased based on the programmer or that person or set of people who pull the questions and answers together. So that was one question that I had around if we can be proactive from a school system to be able to help on that level. That's the first. And then just really quickly, I'll ask the second piece to Ms. Welsh by way of policy. Um, you know what, I I think because we are going to be looking at it annually, then I'll just wipe away my second question. I think looking at it annually is going to really help us to shape and craft the policy moving forward. So I'll just have that that one question.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I'm going to jump in just real quick on the partnership question because we talked at a high level because we do have multiple partnerships and we are taking meetings regularly with vendors around AI. But we do have one really important and powerful institutional partnership that I just want to highlight. It's with a nonprofit organization called AIEDU. And they are, and and they, and we have a formal MOU with them that we signed in June and they led actually a regional professional development session for educators, not just in Prince George's, but all over the DMV at Wise High School last July. And what AIEDU is positioned to do in this space is to do exactly what you just said. Work with districts, connect with the big players, OpenAI, they're Silicon Valley based, Google, Apple, Microsoft, and have a seat at the table, plus federal government, so they have a policy arm to to really connect the K-12 landscape to the providers, just like you said. So we actually, we might be the first district that signed a a formal engagement with AIEDU and a formal partnership through some grant funding. And so we're excited just to flesh that out further. But to answer your question, yes, through that partnership, I believe we have a seat and a voice in driving the conversation. One of their core values, AIEDU, is equity and access to the tools along the lines that we're talking about.
That is so super exciting. Of course, PGCPs proud on that one right there. We're at the table. It really was around influencers. So you answered that piece right there. I I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Vice Chair Walker. We're going to turn it, Ms. Welsh, I saw you come off mute. If you had an additional response, I want to pause to see.
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Board Member Adam Stafford.
All right. Thank you so much, and I really enjoyed that presentation. I just had two questions around ways we're supporting teachers and students with AI. I mean, and it's just really encouraging to see how far we've come since, you know, we, as boards, started talking about this last year. And to see the work you're doing now is really encouraging. I wanted to know, are teachers and students able to get any micro credentialing, credit, and prompt engineering right now? I know that was really fantastic to hear that nine hundred teachers signed up for that PD. And I know there are some prompt engineering credentialing that that has become available online. Is that something that we are exploring? I know there are many free programs and possibly even in our CTE program, maybe piloting students doing some prompt engineering. So that's my first question.
To date, we, we have not completely encouraged prompt engineering, micro credentialing, but I love the idea. I see Sarah shaking her head, so she might have additional feedback to add. My brain is already turning. I like that idea. So we will definitely look to pursue that. I think right now, we were trying to give people a basic understanding of essentially of what AI is and help them understand the ethical considerations and safety considerations around the use of AI. But I love the idea of continuing to elevate their their thought processes around how to, how to be prompt engineer. So we'll definitely look at at that.
Yes, and I definitely wanted to add to what Ms. Robertson was just saying. So as we're thinking towards the future, you know, this is definitely something that that we will keep in mind. We've had some initial discussions, but nothing set in stone. So it's on the roadmap eventually is something that we may look into. But bringing up the CTE part, I was, I was happy to sit on a CTE meeting and I heard that there were some, some courses that kind of touched upon that. So so very happy to hear that.
That's fantastic. And then just, you know, my second point is around the PD that we offer on AI. You know, I have seen some really cool things that teachers have done to make their, to enhance their curriculum, to make it more culturally responsive. For example, I saw a teacher use AI to create a real life vision of what Othello really looked like. And they did it in real time with students. My brain was just like, whoa, just rock my world. And I'm just wondering, you know, if the PD that we have around this can really be tied to the culturally responsive work the district has been doing. I know you all have done a lot of work, you know, around pulling in, you know, culturally responsible teaching in the brain and helping people reimagine curriculum and how to make it engaging for students and just helping people to see that connection, how they can use AI to enhance their curriculum and make it more culturally responsive. So I'm just excited to see what y'all do with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say to your point, there's a tight link between our work and what Ms. Robertson and Dr. Thomas are doing and what Judy White and her team and Dr. Rose are doing, Innovation Officer. And and I would just be remiss, this is such rapidly advancing technology. So to your point, there may be a excellent, excellent lesson going on at school A that we get wind of and we want to pull that teacher to share. So part of our job is facilitating the ground up movement here because no one owns this and has the the final say on on how to use AI. It's got to be a collective push. So completely agree with what you're saying and that I just want to emphasize the tight link with our colleagues in the academics team.
Great. Thanks so much, Board Member Adam Stafford and to Dr. Zacharyman and team. I really appreciate it. I did want to just pose a question. I believe this is to Ms. Roberson, but this may also be Dr. Thomas, around the the framework. And I think you talked about partnerships with academics and IT. I was just hoping you could share more about like the the actual framework. Are there any additional details?
Yeah, yeah. So we, we worked to create a multi-year. Right now, it's three, four year framework that centers on what we say are four key core values around implementation of AI. So with that, it would be safety, equity, intentionality, and safety, equity, intentionality, and innovation are our four core values that. So we have essentially a a public statement that shares where we are currently with AI and where we hope to be in four years. So right now, year zero is our learning year. As we move into to year one, we are starting to look at, you know, curriculum. And of course, as we said, this was developed in partnership with the Division of Academics. So with the particular framework we talked about or looked at ways that we would introduce or integrate AI within the curriculum. We also looked at it from our lens through IT and instructional technology. Again, with those four core values in mind. So each year, we we discuss our partnerships that we currently have with AIEDU and things that we hope to to accomplish over time. We addressed the need for a a policy and and taking the time to review the policy over time. So those are the components that we try to address within that policy and we build on it each year. To that end, though, we do want to take the time to reengage with our other stakeholders. As you mentioned, higher education, I think HR was mentioned as a stakeholder because we recognize that this has an impact, not just on the classroom, but our larger staff. So we want to have an opportunity to reengage with other stakeholders internally and externally to continue to draft and develop the policy so that from that, we can define our strategies more clearly of how we want to develop AI in our district.
Yeah, I love that idea. And I think something that was mentioned earlier was kind of what other states are doing is they're providing kind of regulations and guidance. And so it's also, I don't know if this is, I'm sure this is a consideration for the team, but just taking in best practices there too, as you kind of continue to iterate and, you know, build the foundation, but also kind of build on, I think, this ever changing world.
Absolutely.
And then I did want to just pivot to Ms. Welsh and just say that maybe I want to just put a pin in the, I know you talked about citing the sources for AI and the technology. And I also want to be mindful, Cindy, if I want to be equitable with time, so I don't think the timer was started, but I think I got like a minute left just to make sure I'm not like going over. But Ms. Wel, Mrs. Welsh, I just wanted to flag that, I think, because I've used AI before and I know that normally you don't know where the information comes from. So it's like kind of hard to, you know, cite like where they're pulling it from everywhere, right? The every, all kind of corners of the internet, like they're pulling information. And so I wonder if maybe we can get a bit more explicit around like what that means. Because a student can say that they're citing and that they're not, you know, plagiarizing, but maybe they're in the policy, but at the same time, like not really being academically honest, maybe, maybe not. Just wanted to maybe make sure that we can get like something that's a bit more clear with the the wording there.
Yes, we can. I can do that.
Okay. Thank you so much. And then I am going to turn it over to Vice Chair Walker. For a second.
Yeah, thank you so much. One of the things I'm really excited about is, I wonder inside of our policy, do we have somewhere that says that AI is, I think you said, for professional development. Hopefully, we did say somewhere in there for PD, for trainings for our teachers, as well as our scholars, as AI, you know, evolves. So yes, I hope, that's great. And then to our other two presenters, one of the things I was thinking about is, you know, I've attended conferences that are in the metaverse and they were amazing. And I'm just wondering if we are, you don't have to answer now, but if we want to do forward facing things or think forward on how we can also help in our PDs, help our our teachers to really understand by putting them inside of the metaverse. Or by even teaching classes that are there. It's very exciting stuff, as. My other colleague said earlier. And so I just think we have an opportunity to advance with it. And then help our teachers and our educators recognize the power that's in it so that then they can help our scholars in that way as well. Bringing them on board first, which just sounds like is exactly what you want to do. So, thanks.
Great. Thanks so much, Vice Chair Walker. So if there are no other questions, because I don't see any other hands, and Dr. Zuckerman, I saw you come off mute, so happy.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Walker's statements and say thank you for that. We're capturing the those ideas and appreciate it.
Thanks. I was wondering, I was like, did anybody grab that one right there?
I did. We did. We did. Yeah, thank you. Very, we actually were actually just saying very cool P D in the metaverse. Like, that's. Yeah, that's very cool. Thank you.
Great. All right. So colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion?
I'd like to move that we move to action with the recommendations that Ms. Welsh has and the modifications that she'll make as a result of this conversation.
Okay. Great. Second. Okay, great. So it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governors Committee. On the new policy and bring it back to the next P N G meeting. For further discussion. I'm sorry, for action, but we'll have the inclusion of the pieces that you have heard from our colleagues today. Okay, so we're going to move on to item four point two, Policy seventeen hundred Disabilities Issues Advisory Board. So I yield the floor to. Before I say that, I just want to thank Dr. Zuckerman and team. I believe you all will head out. So thank you for taking time on your Tuesday evening right before Christmas break. We really appreciate it. We want to say happy holidays to you. To your family and to whoever you're going to spend time with. So thanks for being here and safe travels if you're traveling.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to introduce her guests and provide the committee with an update on Policy seventeen hundred Disabilities Issues Advisory Board. Mrs. Welsh?
Yes, so this evening we have Tanell Bowman with us, who's the Associate Superintendent for Special Education. And she is here to share information about C S A C and all and terms of the work they've been doing as well as. Concerns related to accountability in the area of special education to ensure that students. With with special needs absolutely are getting the services that they need to be to to move and progress through, you know, the school system. And I am. Chair Chairperson Fields has suggested that before we do anything with the policy at this point, and we will be doing something with it and making revisions to it, but. That we hear from her in terms of everything they're doing to see if this is, if this advisory board, if. There's a possibility that the C S A C committee could actually become the advisory board or or committee or council, I guess. Or whether or not there would be the need to actually add a second council or a second committee. So. Ms. Bowman is here to share the information that people had asked about and in terms of both the C S A C as well as the accountability piece.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the invitation to come address some of the questions you had at your last meeting. Around this particular policy. Am I able to share my screen? Looks like I can. Perfect. All right, so I'll go ahead and get us started around, again, addressing some of the questions that you all had at your last meeting. Thank all of our board members for all you do to support Prince George's County Public Schools, specifically our students with disabilities. Our session outcomes today is to really provide you with an overview of our Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, known as C C A C. Provide an overview of the systems and structures we have in place in our district to monitor. Individualized education programs and special education services. Just provide you with an overview of our special education strategic plan goals. And our focus areas for this school year. Provide highlights of how the Department of Special Education supports specially-designed instruction for students. And then provide information on the Department of Special Education's approach to professional learning and training. So now I'm going to give you an overview of our Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, known as C C A C. The one thing that's unique about C C A C is that this is required by the Individuals with Disability Education Act. As well as C O M A R, our state regulation. So I D E A does require a state to establish and operate an advisory panel. In Maryland, that panel is called Special Education State Advisory Committee, or C C A C. Again, under the federal law, as we look at C C A C. The membership must comprise. Families of students with disabilities and fifty percent of the C C A C membership must be students and families with disabilities. The purpose of the committee really is to advise the state of unmet needs, concerns, evaluation. Plans to monitor policies and procedures and to coordinate that for students with disabilities. So I did give you the two citations, both the federal I D E A citation as well as C O M A R that governs. C C A C. Every single state across the country has a state C C A C. And a local C C A C for every school district across our country. It may not be called C C A C, but it is a similar governing body. The other thing that I put in here for your reference is M S D E produced or released a technical assistance bulletin. Around C C A C with some F A Qs that may be helpful for you as you look at this particular policy and move forward. As it relates to C C A C. Maryland Regulations does require each local school system. And our districts around the state to establish a C C A C committee. And again, I've given you that C O M A R citation that requires. That we have to establish a C C A C. The purpose of C C A C is really to advise the local school district for the needs of students. And they should allocate funds annually from the state. So C C A C does receive two thousand five hundred dollars every year to help plan their agenda, reports, et cetera, where they deem. Appropriate to spend that particular money. There is a grant narrative and a funding document that is sent to the state for review. We also developed that plan in collaboration with C C A C. And their leadership. Each year, we have a yearly plan for special education as it relates to C C A C. And we review local procedures and establish in collaboration with our C C A C members. So when we think about C C A C, really, it provides a partnership with our families, community leaders, organizations, administrators at the local level. So when you come to our C C A C meeting, we do have community leaders that attend the meeting, families, organizations that work and support our school district. Is really to seek meaningful input around issues and the provision of F A T, known as Free Appropriate Public Education. I've given you the link. To the C C A C website. So if you wanted to peruse that and look at some of the presentations and information there, you're welcome to do so. They also actively collect parent input and concerns. We have a portion of the C C A C agenda each month. Where we actually review concerns that may be from the community, from stakeholders to address those concerns. At times, there are follow-up actions that me and my team take to investigate those concerns. And then advise C C A C of any updates, particularly if we are seeing trends and data systemically across our district. The other piece in terms of the function, they do advise the local school systems of unmet needs. They do participate in the evaluation of local special education services through our comprehensive monitoring. Process, which I'm going to talk a little bit about in just a moment. And that process is state-led. Where the Maryland State Department of Education conducts a comprehensive monitoring process. And C C A C is part of that process as well. They participate in review and evaluation of our staffing plan. So as you know, we have a special education staffing plan that really governs. How we allocate staffing to our schools and at the district level. And so we do have a member. That's part of our staffing committee that is from C C A C. Again, where they develop the grant that we submit to the state each year. They help the local system formulate and develop plans for improving performance of students with disabilities. And one of the examples that I can give you is back in twenty nineteen, there was a West End report. That was released by the state that really looked at the fiscal impact. Around the provision of services for students with disabilities and staff. And so that was a report that our local C C A C actually provided input on and recommendations to the state. And so they're very, again, our C C A C is very active as it relates to policy work. They do participate in our our analysis of our local information. In terms of our parent involvement surveys. So there is an annual survey that's released from the state. They help us analyze the outcome of that. Survey data to target specific areas of support to families based on that parent survey. And so they help with that analysis of that. And where we may need to target our focus around professional learning, coaching. As it relates to either our families and parents or our staff and administrators. And then we submit a year-end report each year. And I've linked that in, and it was also sent over to the board office so that you could take a look at that year-end report. As it relates to C C A C, the inclusive in terms of the membership, there's no formal application process. In terms of the inclusive membership. They do attend, we do have bylaws that talks about how members are elected. So there are some bylaws that each. Of our local districts have as it relates to C C A C. Attendance at our meetings are automatic. It qualifies individuals as as members. So if you attend our C C A C meeting, you are automatically considered a C C A C member. For digital technology and social media platforms, we do utilize our C C A C website. There's a listserv, so we have our Department of Special Education website. They only support website, YouTube, and they also also integrate Robo calls. They're active on Twitter and the Facebook group. They are very, very involved in our community involvement and various community activities that they work in. In terms of our I E P integration, they help with distributing informational C C A C flyers at schools to be shared at all of our I E P meetings. And then, of course, they really do a lot of word-of-mouth advocacy and engage personal interactions. Throughout our district by word of mouth to our families and community members. Some of our planned activities and focuses, they're actively engaged in increasing stakeholder awareness. To really be able to have more families participate in C C A C. So that is one of their priorities. Annually, they work to determine what their priorities will be through their C C A C board. And then they work collaboratively with their C C A C members and community partners through email, correspondence, in-person or online discussions. They collaborate with the Prince George's County Public Schools Department of Special Education Leadership. Throughout the school year, and we also have an executive board planning meeting each summer. To really look at what the monthly agenda topics will be throughout the year and where we may need support or areas of focus. They also have weekly, monthly communication that occurs that are needed by email, phone, or Zoom platforms. To discuss a variety of. Issues or concerns among themselves. Our meetings are held the fourth Tuesday of the month from six thirty to eight. Through our Zoom platform. They do not meet in June, July, August, or December. And then I have hyperlinks for you just so that you can get an array of the topics that they address. Sometimes we have guest speakers. Both from Prince George's County various offices or from other. Presenters that may come in from the local or national level. So I have linked in right here for you the meeting topics for discussion for the last three years. This is our C C A C board. So I wanted you to have that information, the executive board, as well as our outreach committee. The next piece that I wanted to talk about was our special education monitoring systems and structures. And to let you know that the Department of. U S Department of Education and M S D E, the Maryland State Department of Education, does require. All districts to look at a self-assessment for continuous improvement. So in our district, we do have a plan that looks at all of the areas that we monitor at the local level. This slide really gives you the general supervision. So again, U S Department of Education does require. Each state to have a general supervision monitoring that both looks at the programmatic programmatic aspects and the fiscal. So in Prince George's County, we also look at those general supervision. We have a monthly accountability checklist. That all schools utilize and have key indicators that principals and their designated should be monitoring on a monthly basis. As it really, as it relates to services for students with disabilities. We also have developed a special education monitoring plan that has a variety of systems and structures on how we monitor. The implementation of I E P, both from the development, implementation, and evaluation aspect. And then we do have our general supervision fiscal in terms of looking at both our general funds and our restricted funds. And so we do go through various audits with the state. Both at the Maryland State Department of Education, as well as other entities like the legislative audit that we're going through right now. What I did put in here, because I wanted to make sure that you had access. Last April thirteen, twenty twenty-three, I put that presentation in that really did a deep. Dive into all of our general supervision monitoring, the results of our monitoring, both from the state level and the local level. I've also linked in our business intelligence dashboards. I'm going to talk about that in just a moment, because that's something that we have developed over the last. Two years that really helps us monitor our special education services. I also linked in the last continuous improvement results letter for our impotent toddlers. That's when the state actually came into the into Prince George's County to monitor us around the provision of services for impotent toddlers. When they monitor us, not only do they do a desk audit, they look at our. Individualized family support plans, because that's what's under the impotent toddlers program. They interview parents, they interview staff. They actually go out in our impotent toddlers. It is a coaching model, so they physically go out to home to monitor and look at. How services are being implemented. So I wanted you to have that particular letter. They also monitor all of our administrative procedures to make sure that they are aligned. To I D E A and C O M A R regulations. The the other piece I put in here is for our. Part B, which is our students who have individualized education plans for ages three through twenty-one. And that letter is from. Vulture twenty-two. So I wanted you to have that just to take a look at and do a deeper dive around that piece. For our Business Operations Coordinator and Financial Team Oversight, they monitor our general funds, restricted funds, staffing, and the financial dashboards. We meet with our Human Resources Department on a monthly basis, meet with our Budget Office and our Medicaid Office on a monthly basis as well. We participate in the M S D E audit, the triennial audit, where they look at our restricted funds, equipment, staffing, written policies and procedures. We also participate in the comprehensive annual financial report. Where they look at our governmental accounting and financial reporting, equipment and staffing. And then we also participate in a A one thirty-three audit annually. That again, looks at our federal grants and our written policies and procedures. And of course, we have summaries from all of these audits that can be shared upon request. And I'm sure you have seen. Some of these over, you know, the last several years. For our business dashboards for special education, we use a system that really collects and stores and analyzes data. It really helps school leaders and our central office team with maintaining those compliance and performance indicators. That ensure that our I E Ps are being implemented and our policies and procedures. This is just a snapshot of the various dashboard reports that we look at. From expired I E Ps to overdue vows. We have that report that goes out monthly to our schools. As well as to the area office, because it's important, not that, not just that our principals get it, but we also want to make sure that our instructional directors. And our associate superintendents at the area office are also monitoring that data. In case there are conversations that need to be had with the principal regarding those particular reports. So again, these are all the various reports that we look at. We're able to look to make sure that related services are implemented. As well, and if there are any missed sessions, we have a whole process to also monitor that. For our strategic plan. We did develop one in twenty nineteen and really go to, I just want to draw your attention here. Really allowed us to implement an integrated system of general supervision monitoring. Prince George's County did not have a specific general supervision monitoring plan in place, and so we leveraged. Some action items in our strategic plan to be able to develop those plans, those systems and structures that are now in place now. And then, as you know, we are working to update our two point O strategic plan that will be released next school year. Our focus this year is really on implementing a tiered systems of support. Framework to really support our schools, particularly our C S I schools that have been designated by the state. To really look at the frequency and intensity of how we support those schools. We're working to train our teachers on the use of evidence-based strategies. That are incorporated in our district mathematics frameworks. You know that mathematics is a priority for us as a district. We also are continuing to rethink how we provide services to students with disabilities, really focusing on a keen focus on autism. Social emotional behavior and specific learning disabilities. And then we're piloting the use of a monitoring system at selected schools to evaluate the quality of our service delivery models. And we worked with our research, testing, and evaluation team to come up with a logic model. And so this year we will be implementing that to really get baseline. To really get baseline data around how our schools programmatically are servicing students with disabilities. Um, as we think about supporting students with disabilities, we really are looking at supporting them through specially designed instruction. Um, and S D I really is about adapting the content methodology or delivery of instruction. To ensure that students' unique needs are met. And we have, we've done a great job kicking off this summer with meeting with our principals. At their um, systemic principles meeting to really talk about S D I, high-level practices. What, what should they be seeing and hearing when they go into a classroom where a student um, is being implemented with S D I? Um, we know that from a legal's perspective, special ed students must have specially designed. Um, instruction at no cost to parents. And that S D I should have the goal of enabling our children to participate in the curriculum that's available to all students. We have done a variety of tools that help general ed and special ed teachers plan together. Um, to evaluate S D I and how it's being implemented in classrooms. These are just some uh, the five key ways that we look at. How we support implementation of S D I. So our number one piece is our curriculum resource. We've developed a special education instructional planning considerations document. We also, number two, are intentional about our collaboration. With our re- uh, reading language arts and mathematics, science and social study offices. We actually um, co-plan and co-present with them. Um, number three, our professional learning. We, we have after-school clinics. We participate in systemic professional development day. We work with our principals. We also um, have adopted the high-level practices by the Cedar Center. From the Council of Deceptional Children that really looked at what are those high-level practices for students with disabilities? And so this year, we're focusing on scaffold support. Um, in our districts as well as explicit teaching. And then for number five, we have a specially designed fidelity tool. That was really developed to support and evaluate. We use that when we go on a learning walks. To help support our teachers in terms of those areas where they, where we may have to support building their capacity. Special ed interventions, we've developed an intervention selection procedure. To ensure that the area of need for students on their I E P. Is aligned to the intervention that the I E P team chooses. And so we have a very robust monitoring. Piece that we do, we do fidelity checks. We go out to ensure. That interventions are being app implemented with fidelity, actually going into classrooms and observing that. And then monitoring that piece, both with principals, we may have to coach, um, especially at the elementary level. On how they're doing their small group instruction and finding the time to make sure students are getting their intervention. We also have worked to develop the Canvas Intervention Resource Hub. As our district has moved, of course, to adopt Canvas. And then we do provide office hours and individual coaching and observations. And then for our professional learning, this is our approach. Around professional learning is really around, how do we support? Coach, mentor and train teachers around the implementation of S D I across the dish- district. How do we develop individualized education program training modules? And so we look at that every year based on our data, our monitoring data, both from the state. And from our local monitoring process to really refine those training modules for our teachers. We collaborate uh, with our Division of Academics colleagues to make sure that we are providing that professional learning. At the forefront of our experiences. We help facilitate and conduct the professional learning around special ed processes, both for compliance and instruction. And then we manage our professional learning of the district through our e- uh, Doc Trade, our learning management platform. And then these are some of our professional learning categories. Uh, there's definitely more that has been added, but I just wanted you to get a high-level overview of the various learning categories that we provide. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank, uh, first, thank you so much, Ms. Uh, Trinell Bowman for that comprehensive presentation. Um, we really appreciate you. Um, for putting it together and taking the time to do that. Um, secondly, I do want to acknowledge that the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee meeting is, I'm here. Um, Mister, uh, Board Member Walter Fields is here. Um, I'm going to continue to chair um, the, the meeting for this evening, but I want to acknowledge he's here. And this is part of our transition, um, as Walter's last meeting today. So hopefully you all can say him some kind words, um. Um, for, you know, the work that we've done together. Um, and the last thing I want to say, colleagues, is just as a reminder that this discussion is about policy seventeen hundred disability issues and advisory. Board. Um, so I would love it if we could focus our questioning on that. That's uh, why Ms. Um, Bowman came this evening was to. Present on any aspects of that, that um, maybe overlapping or redundancies. Um, and so that's what we will do. I'm going to acknowledge um, committee members first. And then I'll turn to board members that have joined this evening. Um, and it would be lovely if we could keep the timer up so that we can make sure that we're using our time wisely. I will turn to um, Board Member Dr. Miller first, Wannita Miller.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bowman, for an excellent presentation uh, on C CAC. Uh, that was a concern at our last meeting because some members were not familiar with it. And I guess the question today is, uh, is this policy really necessary for us to implement? Since there is, you know, uh, the, the state. Um, state board, or not the state board, but the state uh, commission or committee. Advisory committee. That was a question.
Ms. Bowman, if you're speaking, we can.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, Ms. Miller, is that you're asking me that question or you're asking colleagues?
Would it be, does it, uh, would it be redundant for us to make a policy for us to have that um, advisory board or committee?
Well, I think part of um, C CAC, I mean, does, there is a. When I look at the policy for seventeen hundred, it really didn't address some of the aspects. I think, or concern around the accountability. And systems and structures of special education. M S D E does monitor us. And that way. Um, and C CAC does contribute to um, aspects of the monitoring process. And so I, I think I would yield the floor to you all to have that discussion. Um, in terms of if it's overlapping. But I think the concern that you had around the monitoring of special ed. Definitely the state does monitor us and we monitor ourselves at the local level. So there is oversight and governance and accountability. From the state level as it relates to the provision of special ed services.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Miller. Um, I'm going to turn it to um, Board Member Rout and then Board Member Adam Stafford.
Thank you so much, Chair Br- oh, Vice Chair Briggs. Um, so I just, um, I really appreciated. Um, the very robust presentation. So from my understanding, um, the S E C A C. They um, do a great job with advocating for special education. Um, driven by parents and caregiver engagement. Um, but my question is, um. Your perspective on policy seventeen hundred, um, with regard to the broader mandate. Um, that the policy is calling on addressing wide-range disability issues, including. Compliance with A D A, Maryland Human Rights Acts. Um, so can you, I, ca- can you expand um, to let me know if the S C, S E C A C um. Advises on those particular items?
So I would just say, if there are concerns at the school level around accessibility in buildings. That had come up, um, that did come up through C CAC, through its membership. And so one of the things that we did do as a, as a, at it, as it related to that concern. Is we do have an accessibility of buildings checklist that our physical therapists do on a yearly basis. Where they go out and actually look at all of our buildings and schools. Through the A D A policies around, is the building accessible? So they look at about. Twenty-five to thirty different indicators. Does the school have a ramp? Do we have, um, you know, a, um, is, is a student able to get on the stage? Is there a cut curve for wheelchairs? So there's a variety of things that we do look at. And that was a concern that C CAC walked to us. We were able to leverage uh, the current commission funding to make twenty-two of our elementary schools accessible. As a result of that concern. So there are things that does, that do come up through C CAC that we do address. As it relates to, you know, both I D E A and the Americans with Disability Act. So that's the, the. Latest example that I can give you. That C CAC did bring up around some of our buildings not being accessible and how we were addressing that. Does that answer your question, Board Member Rout?
Uh, kind of. So can you talk about some of the new construction and the renovations? Does this process also happen um, during that? Because I, I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty new to the board, but I haven't seen. Anything that has bubbled up to Al Bafa. Um, and so that's the point I'm trying to make is that. I think that the disability issues advisory board can complement what's already going on. And if you look at the current makeup, there is a place for a person that is on. Um, the S E C A C for Prince George's County. There is, that is written in. To the actual policy. So they would have a seat at the table to advise wider. On school construction during a presentation. I did not hear anything on school construction. Um, also, human, human resources policies. Um, looking at the policies behind um, what's going on, advocating for. Um, fair treatment of staff with disabilities. It, it goes a bit wider than just um, the children. Um, the disability issue advisory board looks at disability issues as a whole. Looking at um, employees as well as students, parents, um, and the larger community. So. I guess my question to you is, how often is there advisement on school construction and human resources policies?
So we do have um, administrative procedure. Um, twenty-five oh five. Facilities planning for students with disabilities. Um, and so we do meet monthly with our long-range planning committee to talk about facilities planning. To make sure that we're doing site visits, that they're complying with A D A. And so that is a current administrative procedure that we do have in place. That lists out some of the requirements that we have to go through. So with all the new construction. We leveraged our A P twenty-five oh five to look at those particular issues. And that is a current administrative procedure that we do have now. As it relates to human resources, um, like I said, we do meet with them monthly. Um, in terms of concerns or issues that may. Come up to the forefront as it relates to special ed staffing, et cetera. So there is a structure in place to meet monthly. With our director, um, and if needed, elevate it to our uh, division chief. So that's what I would say. So for the facilities planning, we do have the boundary initiative. Um, administrative procedure and the facilities planning for students with disabilities. That grapples and looks at accessibility of our buildings as it relates to students with disabilities.
Great. Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Trinell Bowman and um, Board Member um, uh, Rout. Um, and we'll have an opportunity for a second round if there are additional questions you didn't get answered. So we're going to move to um, Board Member, um, Adam Stafford.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much, Ms. Bowman, for allowing me to be here. Um, I've had the opportunity to come to S E C A C meeting. And you all do give out really great information and really engage parents and, and community members in a really meaningful way. So. Really happy to know about the work that you do. Um, I just have a few clarifying questions, um, because really the goal here is to bring our board in alignment with. The policy that we already have. Um, and it's not to duplicate the work that this team does. Um, but to really make sure that we're um, in alignment. And. My question is, um, the members that are on the S E C A C are, are they nominated by the Board of Education? Or does the Board of Education have any say in who those members are?
No, they're, they're, they are a governing body among themselves. So they. Run for that particular office and then they're voted on by the membership.
Okay. And do you have any representation from any of our bargaining units like P G C A C or Ace Avsmi or S E I U?
So we do have teachers and principals that attend C CAC. So those are definitely two of the representatives that do attend our C CAC meetings. Definitely teachers and definitely principals.
But are they there in the capacity as a representative of those unions?
No.
Okay, all right. And do you all, um. Have you all presented any policy suggestions to the board? I do remember the presentation. That referenced them last year, but. I don't, I looked at the presentation and I didn't see any policy recommendations to the board in that presentation.
So I would say no, over the years, not in the last probably five years, have they made any recommendations? But in the past, they have.
Yeah. So, so really, the goal here is to sort of fill in those gaps, right? So you all are doing a fantastic job of. You know, monitoring what's happening with students. Um, you, you shared with us the extensive strategic plan that you all have, and, and that is wonderful and fantastic. What we're really looking to do here is to engage a, a broader audience of stakeholders. Including our employees, um, and have a group that will. Impact our, our policymaking, that will come to the board and give recommendations to us to say, look, we've looked at the entire landscape. Of facilities. We looked at the entire landscape of. Um, you know, uh, hiring challenges around um, disability issues. And here are four or five recommendations that we would like the school system to act on. And that is what I think is the major difference between the disability issues advisory board and the S E C A C. And that's really what, you know, my goal is in, in advocating for this. Um, and it's not a knock to the work of the S C C A team. And as uh, my colleague mentioned. It's, it's written into the policy that the S E C A C is a part of this group. To bring that work that you're doing to the forefront. And so I just wanted to make that distinction and clarification um, for my colleagues. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much, uh, Board Member Adam Stafford. And Ms. Bowman, I'm not sure if you had any additional comments you wanted to add to, to that questioning, um, before we move to the next uh, committee member.
No.
Okay, great. Uh, so we're going to um, turn it over to um, Chair uh, Fields and then um, Vice Chair of the Board.
Yeah, uh, good evening. I would just like to add that on those issues of um. Access on the A D A, we are bound by federal law for all of our facilities. Um, old and new construction. Um, and in terms of personnel. Likewise, there's federal anti-discrimination law that is in place. So I think that there are um, ways to hold. Uh, the district accountable on those two areas. Um, and I would again be hesitant to create another body. Um, I think that there are ways to do it within the current structure. Um, but I would be hesitant to support the creation of an additional board. Um, I think that we could bring in a school district, uh, legal counsel on those issues around um. A D A and disability uh, rights within um, human uh, resources. And that may be a conversation worth having. To get a clear understanding of the reporting mechanisms, uh, when those claims come up. Uh, from a legal perspective, uh, but the, the district is bound by law. Um, on those two very specific um, areas. And that, that's all I wanted to add on there.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Fields. Um. And, and I don't see any other hands, so I will defer.
Oh, I thought you had already recognized me. I put my hand down, but thank you. No worries at all. I did put it down for a second. Hi, everyone. Um, thank you, uh, Board Member Fields. I was going to add that piece about law. Um, but the other piece I was just going to add is that it seems like there's good conversation that's happening around this. And given that this is um, of essence of time, and then we need to put. Um, you know, real thought into this. Maybe it's something that we don't take to action right now, but have as a further discussion so that the entire board. Can have one more opportunity to take a look at the wording, um, because it has been brought to us before. And I'm just concerned that if there are significant um, questions or even recommendations. That that be brought in a comprehensive style so that we can move forward accordingly. Does that make sense? I'm talking to the Chair or the Vice Chair. And also, we, we, um, I'm thinking that we also might want to have that. Uh, opportunity to also take this information back to C CAC. Um, for our partner to take this back to C CAC and ensure that we're comprehensive, we're with the law, and we're not redundant in what we're moving forward with.
Yeah. Thank you. Point well taken, um, Vice Chair Walker. So what I will say is that I know that um, Mrs. Welsh, Cindy and I, at our last. Uh, meeting had a discussion about, um, there's a process already in place around like policy changes. And so I think what we can do is we can circulate maybe that document with um, board members that are really interested in this policy. To kind of get additional recommendations around what we'd like to see changed, um, so that we can have a more kind of formulated, structured approach. Um, and in a more focused discussion, though I, I think it's been focused so far. Um, I'm going to de- uh, turn to um. Uh, Board Member Adam Stafford.
Thank you. And this question is for um, our legal counsel, um, and Robin Welsh. Um, do, could you refer to the annotated code and possibly tell us? What the annotated code states about the school board's. Um, role in. this particular topic in terms of disability advisory um, and oversight?
Um, I'll talk and then Dennis can talk. Um, they, um, the, the anti-code education article doesn't address the specific disability advisory committee for a board advisory committee. It does talk about it in terms of having it set up as CSAC, which is driven by the law. However, there is a provision in the uh, education article that says that the Board of Education can have any type of advisory committee that they want. So I mean, um, you're required to have your parents advisory, uh, pair, like your PCAC is required by law. But you also can have any other type of advisory committee that you would wanna put into place. So, um, I mean, it's, it's definitely, you know, an allowed thing in the law. But Dennis maybe.
I guess maybe I'm looking at something different than saying that local school boards are required to establish a CCAT. So maybe I'm interpreting that wrong. But Dennis, were you gonna say something? I was thinking, Ms. Welsh.
I was actually gonna um, um, echo what Ms. Welsh just said, and I believe what Ms. Bowman has said as well. This is a, a board preference issue. Um, if the board uh, doesn't believe that the uh, CCAT is um, fulfilling all the, the needs that the board wants with reference to this particular area, the board is able to set up a second uh, committee to uh, fill in any perceived gaps. Uh, in August, the board understands that there are, there's already a committee. This is what the committee does, and this is where the board believes that there are shortcomings in what that committee is doing and.
I'm sorry, I have four seconds. It, it's not, it's not step, set, setting up a separate committee. It's revitalizing a committee that already exists in our policy. So we are not in compliance with our policy because this committee is not appointed by the board. And so that's kind of the distinction here, and it has two se- different focus areas that could have some overlap, but not, that do not necessarily overlap at this time. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you so much to you both. Um, I'm gonna actually go to, sorry, uh, Board Member Rowell. I have to keep remembering that um, Chair McIsmurray is an executive official member of the committee, so I'm gonna acknowledge her first, and then I'll go to you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I apologize for not being on camera. I don't feel well, but I have appreciated this conversation. And I also think that uh, we are starting to recognize that we, the goal is for us to meet the letter of the law, but to also have an inclusive representation from the community. It seems as though CCAT, they already exist. And then my question is, can board members, I know you can go and join the, join as a committee member, but I don't think we wanna do that. I think I would like to go to a meeting, uh, just to observe and how they carry out the meeting, just to see if at, at any point, do they weigh in on how well we are doing as a district? And do they communicate that to the, the staff that, that's in the room? Because what I'm looking at is when uh, Superintendent House held his um, town hall. One of the main issues over and over was special education and parents not being able to get kids in a school or in an appropriate classroom. And I'm just wondering, does that committee weigh in on that? I've noticed in some of the uh, emails I've received, they do help to direct the parents to a place to get some help. But to, to weigh in as a group, I think would be powerful to help the district to see, well, maybe you're not doing enough over here. Maybe you need to do some things over there. And that's the piece that I'm not seeing, and I think that's the piece that uh, we might wanna grapple with going forward. So I, I just wanna know, can we go to the meeting, uh, Ms. Bowman?
Yeah. Any of our CCAT meetings are open, and I know some of our board members have attended those CCAT meetings uh, before, and they definitely bring up concerns, and we do have discussions around trends and data that we're seeing as well as next steps. So a concern may come up. We do research and we do come back to CCAT to provide them with updates related to those concerns and what our findings might have been on a certain topic. But you're always welcome to attend any of our board.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I know that Board Member Rowell has uh, children with special needs. I could understand the personal interest from her perspective, so, and her, her insight. So um, I'm enjoying the conversation, and Ms. Bowman, you did an excellent presentation. So thank you so much. It was very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair McIsmurray. I'm gonna turn to Board Member Rowell.
Thank you so much, and I'm gonna lower my hand. Vice Chair Briggs, um, and yes, thank you for um, that um, Chair McIsmurray. Um, you know, I think, uh, as I stated before, this is like a wider, um, the, this is, I've been to a couple, um, SEC, I'mma call it CCAT, like y'all, uh, CCAT meetings. Um, and I think the meetings are conducted very well. That's, it's, I mean, I think the, 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 the parents and the advocates that are there are really focused on looking at community engagement and empowerment. Those are the first, you know, those are the two words that come to mind when I'm thinking about how they do make recommendations to the school system. And so as I stated before, I don't think that, you know, we are, we, e- even speaking with the superintendent, um, briefly about this issue, I think there's room for this to just be stood back up as it's already in our board policy. This isn't something new. Um, because it, 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 it really takes, it, it looks at, it looks at a, a different perspective. And I know my colleagues were sharing about the ADA compliance issues. Well, we heard some ADA issues at some of our town halls where, um, even at um, Flowers, where one of the uh, one of the sessions were held, there was a mother of a student in a wheelchair that could not even access the auditorium because of the wheelchair. And so there needs to be ad, an advisory capacity for members of a, 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 a advisory group to bring that, that kind of information back to the board so that we can allocate those necessary funds. As you've heard, they, there has not been a policy suggestion, um, I can imagine since um, over, over the last seven years. Um, I have, I have attended these meetings. I have saw some of their presentations. I've had a student with disability for at least seven years. So what I'm saying is that this, eh, eh, this could complement each other. And so I really would like for Vice Chair Walker, your recommendation to just go back, review the policy, review the presentation, and look at the gaps that we currently have, because there are some significant gaps.
Great. Thank you so much, um, Board Member Rowell. Uh, so I think, um, given everyone's reflections and also that we have a hefty list of policies, um, in, in, in a limited amount of time. Um, I want to um, put a pin in this and say that I think, Ms. Welsh, we've got enough information. It sounds like, um, from everyone's kind of comments, it's around having a broader set of, uh, set of stakeholders um, that can be included in, um, you know, the outcomes of um, uh, the, 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 the additional policies and programmatic pieces that need to change in special education. Um, as well as I think kind of doing additional landscape analysis of like what exists and what's the best vehicle uh, to do that with. So I think maybe that's the starter, is kind of going there, and we can just have like a touch point to just continue that discussion and really gather the information and to make it more clear, um, so that we understand how we can all move forward. But it sounds like everyone's saying the same thing here. Um, so, um, with that being said, colleagues, uh, should this policy, oh, yeah, Ms. Welsh?
So I just wanted to ask a question. So if we are planning to bring it back, um, um, of course, I'll revise it to reflect the, uh, our new uh, formatting and everything. But my question to you is, do you, is this policy the substance of the policy to remain the same? Or is it to be expanded to address uh, many of the same issues that CCAT also addresses?
I don't think it's either. That's not what I'm hearing. What, what I'm hearing is we'd like to figure out what is the appropriate right step. Um, and so maybe it's additional information, um, collecting of information to figure out. So then not to complicate this. Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Wow.
It's great. So colleagues, um, I think we've got a, a, a kind of a, a, a clear moving for.
Not.
Okay, um, Dr. Miller, Dr. Juanita Miller.
I, I just want clarification. Are we looking for um, more um, uh, global uh, uh, areas of compliance uh, for special ed uh, in terms of um, now Ms. Rowell mentioned, uh, con, well, someone, I can't, I won't call her name, mentioned construction or um, another one, uh, excuse me, the issues all uh, appear to be, be around compliance, which CCAT seems to address, and they address it because the um, uh, community or educators or administrators bring those issues to the board of CCAT, and then they inform us that we have some compliance issues. So I'm just, I'm not clear on the extension of what we, uh, what we're supposed.
I think, yeah, I think what they're saying, what I heard again, is that there's, there's a federal mandate, right, from rule legislation and law. There's also the requirement that there is a CCAT for, um, you know, the school districts as well as there's one at the, the state department level, and there are some gaps that exist. And so there are some additional pieces that board members are advocating be covered that aren't being covered through the processes we already have in place. And so that's what we wanna, wanna discover more about is what exactly is the right. Is it an additional advisory or are there other pieces? And that's what Ms. Welsh is gonna work on, bringing back to the committee for further discussion. Um, so that's what I heard.
So we're closing a gap. Excuse me. So you're saying that there, well, who's gonna identify what the gap, um, what exists in this gap? Are we asking the um, Welch to investigate? Or are the board members who are aware of uh, certain gaps going to provide, you know, provide that information as well for research?
We're gonna, as a next step, we're gonna provide a form to the board members who've been advocating for this, where they can put in writing, so that's very clear for Ms. Welsh, the specific recommendations that we heard this evening. So those are gonna be the recommendations she'll move forward on as next steps. Everything we talked about this evening.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So, uh, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations. Okay, uh, I got one more comment. Um, I'm gonna turn to Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, um, I just wanted to just ensure as we close this one out for next steps is that this is gonna be provided to not only the board members who are advocates on this call tonight, but the entire committee as well as to the board who might not have even been able to be represented tonight. We're gonna send this policy out as we always do and get the feedback so that we can gain the information so we could vote on this bill. Is that correct? I mean, policy not.
Yeah, and yes, that's absolutely correct. What we'll also do is we'll reframe everything for everyone so that it's clear about what we're discussing and what we're asking. Because there is a specific set of priorities that have been mentioned. I think it, we don't wanna just reopen the door again, floodgates for more information. We have clear criteria that we wanna address. So I think that's what we'll do. But to your point, yes, Vice Chair Walker, we'll make this inclusive of everyone.
Um, yeah, I guess, um, okay, I'll take a look at it when it comes, but I just, um, I wasn't. The priorities that are our new priorities that are to get us back in alignment as we need to do with a number of other policies is not an agenda for just, it's, it's to close specific gaps, right? And that's what we're getting clear on what those are, like the gaps that are currently inside of our current policy. It's just what we normally do on an ongoing basis. Is that, what's different about what we're doing now?
Well, no, no, I don't think that's it. I think it's, there, there's a policy, right, and the policy is outlined, and then there are gaps in things that are not being addressed through that policy. So the goal is to have something that can address those gaps. Right now, there's federal legislation that is mandated, and those things are covering lots of things that Ms. uh, Tr- Trenell Bowman
Right.
like thirty minutes. So I think now what we wanna do is we wanna ensure based on the comments that were, um, that were given by other board members, there are some gaps that exist. And we wanna ensure those things can be addressed by whatever vehicle, whether it's a, a advisory um, board or some other way. Um, but that's what Ms. Welsh's task is, and that's what we're going to provide to board members through a document to circulate so that everyone knows, based on the recommendations given here this evening.
Okay, so I think what I hear you saying, I just wanna make sure I'm super clear, is that this is no different than any other policy that comes here. We see that there are some gaps that need to be identified clearly, which is what we do. We provide information to Ms. Welsh, and then she's gonna cut, very much like we did with AI or PCAC, and then she's gonna come back with additional information after everybody has had a chance to give in, and then we should be really voting on that policy. Do I hear that correctly? Cause otherwise, I feel like what are we, what are we doing differently?
Yeah, essentially, I think that's it. I think we'll, we'll, we'll have a recommendation, hopefully from Ms. Welsh around what is the right next uh, step. Um, and whether the advisory um, ca- uh, board is it.
Chair Briggs, Chair Briggs, uh, board number from the OBFA committee, or, or someone, one of the board members mentioned that they hadn't seen anything, any budgetary items come through OBFA. So is, if that's a concern that we need to address in this policy, then uh, Ms. um, Welch, I guess you will have to determine what fiscal notes would be needed eh, uh, in uh, the inclusion of um, the development of any kind of policy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I think we'll work there. I think there's probably some additional information that's, that's needed uh, on the budgetary end. But yes, CCAT does cover budgetary, and then also it covers programmatic, which is what Ms. Bowman presented on. Um, I'm gonna turn, if Ms. Walker, it looks like your time's up, so I'm gonna turn over to Dr. uh, Zepor Miller.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Chair Briggs. I just wanted to clarify, but I think my question's been answered, so forgive me if I'm being redundant. Um, by it being sent out to the board, um, could I ask to get, to ensure that the board have context to the conversation? Would it be too much to ask when it's sent out to have them watch this recording? That way we don't have to repeat the conversation, but have them watch the recording so that they have context as to what the con, the conversation that happened tonight. Um, so they can better understand what we, you know, the context of where we're trying to go with the policy.
That's a great idea. We can link it in the document, yeah, and then we can just have some top line bullet points. Um, so with that said, um, Ms. Welsh, if you don't have any comments, it's here from you.
Uh, I do have one comment.
Okay.
Uh, my, our question. So as you said, you're, uh, so you're gonna send a, a file out to the committee members to identify the gaps, and that'll be my starting point. Is that what I'm hearing? I just wanna know where I'm going. I mean, I could write things up, but if there's specific things that people wanna see in the policy, I would appreciate having that information now. It makes it much easier.
Yeah, essentially what we'll do is we'll have the document, I'll work with Cindy, and we'll have the recommendations that are made here this evening, so you have what they're looking for. So you don't have to guess or go back and watch anything. You'll just know exactly what it is they're asking for, um, based on discussion.
Okay.
And that'll also be for other board members. Um, so Ms. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy seventeen hundred and bring it back to the next PNG meeting for further discussion. Please and thank you. We're going to uh, three point O legislative updates, um, and I will recognize myself to provide a committee update on the May legislative committee meeting, and then I will turn it um, over to Mrs. Welsh for additional uh, gaps that I was not able to address um, for uh, May.
Um, Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I think we can let uh, Ms. Bowman leave.
Oh.
She hasn't left, so I just wanted to make sure.
I'm, I'm moving really fast, but Ms. Bowman, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, thank you so much. So we'll pivot to uh, item three point O, May. Uh, this is the legislative meeting. And uh, May had a few focus areas at the meeting on December fourth. Uh, they're addressing local funding inadequacies and maintenance of effort, ensuring that we are, I'm being able to keep uh, budgetary items where they were um, at the pandemic levels. Um, and then also advocating for the restoration uh, or escalator uh, of inflation factors that are gonna be included in um, the budget. Um, there were some discussions around foundation funding, funding in the, in the budget and its neutrality. And this is a major state source to address system-wide needs. Um, the foundation budget item is um, neutral, as I said. And um, the money is uh, for uh, per people funding and addresses staffing and other program needs. It's like the largest budgetary item that they talked about. Um, the other piece was the per people funding model uh, for compensatory education and program needs uh, came up as um, a really important priority, including um, addressing low-income family needs um, is a big issue, and, and also equity being the foundation of that. Um, and so the goal is to keep the draft plan in line with the framework of the blueprint, which, which addresses equity and making sure that our um, schools that have the most need are receiving the, the adequate funding they need. There were also discussions about, um, the mandated funding for each school being at least seventy-five percent. Um, uh, being at, at least uh, seventy-five percent and eighty-six, eighty-six percent of the funding going to Title I schools. Um, so seventy-five percent of the funding going to, uh, for the per people funding and eighty-six percent uh, for per people funding to Title I schools. And Ms. Welsh, you'll correct me here if any of those things are um, not correct. Um, charter school funding, they were collaborating with uh, Baltimore City to address charter school funding issues and relying heavily uh, on um, a seventy to eighty-five percent uh, funding uh, piece for charter schools. And then they talked about a legislative strategy, um, and reviewing the draft bill with feedback from um, Baltimore, they had a draft. And then they talked about a legislative strategy um and reviewing the draft bill with feedback from um Baltimore. They had a draft bill that they're presenting. Um, to raise awareness about some of the blueprint challenges in Baltimore. Um, planning to meet, they're planning to meet with lobbyists to seek sponsorship on the House and Senate side and engage with legislative staff. Um, and May wants to look clearly at the draft bill to ensure that it is comprehensive and has buy-in. Um, they've also gotten feedback from Baltimore, as I shared. Um, and this is an aggressive agenda to raise awareness about real critical challenges and issues under the blueprint. There were discussions about ensuring equity, as I mentioned, and that funding goes to the students who needed the most. And then the plan is to take the draft legislation, meet with the lobbyist and pursue sponsorship on the House and Senate side. Um, and they also plan to reach out to the governor's legislative director, the speaker, and the president's legislative staff. And there is no sense uh from May that they'll be blocked when uh when they're looking for sponsors. So they believe it's some buy-in. Um, as far as sponsorship and outreach, they talked about identifying potential sponsors, including rural Democrats aligned with blueprint implementation. And exercising sensitivity when discussing the blueprint and exploring options for lobbyists around funding. Um, and then the the next steps really include um scheduling conferences with the governor, the governor's staff, the speaker and the president. Do the same uh to discuss the bill and then anticipating a flurry of initiatives around the legislation. Um, and they anticipate a flurry of of uh initiatives around the legislation in the next six weeks. Um, some bills that came up uh to look out for include um the um the Mako Ed Funding Transparency Bill. Um, there's a P S S A M two thousand twenty-four Legislative Priorities piece. Um, there's the Special Education Reform Bill, Teachers Apprenticeship Bill, um HB four forty-eight and then Public Special Education. Um, and then um there will be a Mayb Legislative Day reception on Monday, February fifth. Uh, from five to seven um in Annapolis, uh, so um market calendars. Um, and finally, um, the next uh legislate, Mayb Legislative Meeting is January eighth. Um, of the new year from one to three. Um, and I will turn it over to you, Ms. Welsh, if there's any corrections. Or uh also if there's any additional pieces that I didn't cover that you want to add in there.
So I have no cor- corrections. However, I did want to share uh a a bill and you referenced it. That I think it is a a a bill that we should be concerned about. It is a local bill that that Mako is uh pushing forward. It is the Education Transparency Transparency Act of twenty twenty-four. Um, and the reason why I think it is concerning is because um basically. It it is uh within that bill, they have added lots of language that ensures that the that the school systems must. Share lots of different types of information to the counties. At county governments and the, not because they wouldn't, but the real reason is is because they are concerned. There's the biggest concern is that the twenty twenty-six, when the blueprint money is, there's a. A large amount of money that's supposed to be going to the schools um on twenty twenty-six. The counties don't feel like they're gonna have adequate funding to not only just support education, but to support the rest of the services they provide. Like transportation, safety, those kinds of things. And so they want to be able to have a handle on see how we spend our money, how we're using that money. And are we using it in the way that we said we're gonna use the money or we're required to use the money? So they are requesting, um, but they're saying they're not gonna tell us how to use the money, but they are. But the whole idea is to have their eyes on how we use the money. So it's, I think it could be problematic down the road. Just because of the fact that it's, it, they could expand into something a little bit more than what we might expect. Um, because that we do get our funding from the county. So if they feel like we haven't used them. And they don't want to just see the money they're giving. It's the state money, the federal money, all the money we receive and how we spend it. So I think it's gonna be a good one to watch to see where, how that bill transpires as it goes through the general uh session.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, Mrs. Welsh. Um, and we're gonna move to item three point two Blueprint Implementation Update. Uh, Mr. Fields will provide the committee with an update on the blueprint implementation.
So what Ms. Welsh described is a perfect segue um to this agenda item. Uh, the blueprint will be three years old uh in February of twenty twenty-four. And it's probably facing uh its most serious challenge in terms of its. Um, holistic approach to education reform. So the Mako bill really represents county leaders. Attempting to wrestle control over the spending in the blueprint. The fear that twenty twenty-six will be a fiscal cliff is real. But the question becomes, do you undermine children in the state of Maryland? Or do what you need to do, including raise taxes, to be able to provide the funding. For this decade-long commitment to schoolchildren in the state of Maryland. So that Mako bill is a Trojan horse. Um, it looks like a bill that attempts to. Uh, provide some accountability, which there already is. Remember, there is an Accountability and Implementation Board. That was created for this very purpose over the blueprint for Maryland's future. And you also have the Maryland State Department of Education. So there is a lot of eyes on blueprint funding. Uh, the Mako bill is an attempt by county executives. To see if they can control some of the spending that will go to education. Yes, there is a fear that they will have to make some hard choices about their budgets. And whether or not they are going to keep the commitment that was made to the Children's State of Maryland, a commitment that Governor Wes Moore has repeatedly said. He wants to blueprint fully funded. Um, so I think we have to keep our eyes on that Mako bill. But this will be one of the most tense of years for the blueprint since it was adopted. Uh, three years ago, and we should all be uh mindful of that as we go into this ninety-day legislative session. Uh, and that's all I have, uh, Vice Chair on item three point two.
Okay, um, Ms. Welsh, I saw you come off mute. I'm not sure, Mrs. Welsh, uh, do you have anything additional to add?
No, I don't.
I don't think yet. Um, and colleagues, I'll just ask i- if we're we're not speaking, if we can be on mute, um, just for any background noise. I'm gonna move through item three point three and then I will address questions after we get through that. Um, so item three point three is legislative update. Um, Mr. Fields, I believe you will provide uh the committee with an update on PGCS's Legislative Day and or any legislative update um updates.
Sure, so uh. PGCPS held its first-ever Legislative Day on Friday, uh, December fifteenth. So we had a very good presentation from our county, state legislators in the room. As well as school district staff and parents. Um, and that day represents the first attempt. To really uh put forth a collaborative legislative agenda on the part of the Board of Education. Um, and the administration. And I I do want to thank um Superintendent House, Chief Boyd. Um, Ms. Welsh for their efforts in pulling this together. It was a monumental effort. Pull this off, and I think um everyone um did a fantastic job. And so the next step in this process um should be, as we roll out this legislative agenda, to look at those items. That we would like to advance in this legislative session that's coming up. If there is a need to have uh legislation drafted, we should start working on that now. Um, I spoke to Ms. McCray, who is a government relations administrator. Um, and suggested that the committee um and Ms. McCray should meet. There are a couple of items on there that are board priority items, such as returning uh to the board the authority to. Uh, select a superintendent. Um, that's not a heavy lift because that language already exists for other counties in the state. So in terms of writing a bill that speaks to that. Then the second process is, of course, finding a bill sponsor amongst our uh county legislative delegation. So that they will file that that bill. But those are the next steps um as we move forward. Um, I also suggested to Chief Boyd, um, as it was suggested to me. That we should be planning an end-of-session event. So that we can see um how we did on the agenda, what items were picked up. Adopted, what items weren't, so that we can have a clear understanding of beginning to end in the process. Um, and it's going to be incumbent upon the district to be very visible during this legislative session. Uh, we heard from a couple of our legislators about being present for committee hearings. Uh, we need to make that happen because to advance the agenda, we are going to have to advocate for it. And we're gonna have to make sure that we stay um on top um of the issues. I will say for the public's sake, uh, you can go on the PGCPS website and look under Newsroom. And you can find information about our Legislative Day as well as get a copy um of a legislative agenda to download it. Uh, but that in a nutshell, uh, is where we are. But I think the district um. Has really done something special this year in trying to come together in this way so that we're not reacting. Um, during the legislative session, that we're trying to be proactive. Um, not all of our agenda items will be considered. Um, you know, ninety days, some will be considered, some won't be considered, some will have to be carried over for next year. Uh, this is an ongoing process and the public should know that. Uh, but we have at least started down this path. Um, and I forward, um, even in my non-service, um, uh, to the district. Uh, to be very supportive of this legislative agenda during this upcoming legislative session. It's all that I have.
Great, thank you so much, Chair Fields. And um, I think that was a, um, we appreciate the wise comments and also, um, you know, hopefully. The ability to work together um as you transition into a new role. Before we move on to item four point O. I do want to acknowledge um board member, uh, Dr. Juanita Miller for a question.
No, it wasn't a question, and it was just a comment that I I had spoken to uh a delegate today. And there's an issue coming up relative to um uh uh excise or sales tax. Um, they don't know which one is going to come from, but to assure that we get full funding for uh the uh blueprint. However, the language in the bill right now says that a certain percentage of. Fun of, yeah, funds from one of these taxes may be a lot allocated to um. Blueprint and um the suggestion, I made the suggestion that we need to look at. Uh, changing the language to shall. That is a guarantee that we will get a certain percentage. We have to look at that very carefully to make sure that there's no change in the percentage of that sales tax uh revenue. Uh, that is proposed to be allocated to uh blueprint. I just want to add that because that can come in and if we aren't, um, if we aren't aware of it. It can just slide right on by and then we wonder what happened here. So I'm just sharing that information.
Thank you for flagging that, um, and and look forward to additional conversations about that priority into the new year. Um, so we're gonna move to item uh four point O items for discussion, and it looks like our colleague left, but um. So we may need to table this. So colleagues, before we proceed with the remaining nine items for discussion, I would like to provide um doctor, uh, board member. Um, um, Dr. Zepor Miller with the point of person information to speak to policy fifty-one forty-three bullying, harassment. Or intimidation due to the number of policies. This evening, we will have three minutes uh for the first round and two minutes um for the second round. However, it looks like Dr. Z Miller is not with us, um, and that she may have left uh unintentionally. Um, so I think what we can do is um perhaps, um, Cindy, we can table this and we can. Um, move this further down and if she rejoins, um, then we can just um uh uh turn to her. And we'll move on to um item four point three. Okay, so um we'll move to item four point three, um, policy search and seizure. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on the new policy search and seizure. Ms. Welsh, Mrs. Welsh.
Okay, um, oh, thank you, Cindy. Uh, so if you, um, so there were just some minor changes that needed to be played, put into the policy. So if you scroll down, what I did was, um, since the last time we met, I had everything in yellow that were the changes from the previous meeting. This time, any changes I made, I put, I highlighted in green, just so we know exactly what got changed. So if you just scroll down, Cindy, we should be able to find them. So one of the things I did uh 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 add was a definition of business day. And the reason that you'll see the a few minutes has to do with giving the notice to the parent about um if their child has been searched. So that's scrolled down a little bit further. Green will show up soon. Here we go. So so then the the um. The the conversation that we had at the last meeting had to do with maybe giving a limit to the school to get the notice out. So that it it wasn't one of those things that maybe sat there for how long before the parent actually received it. So I have no later than two business days following the search. And that that and and that's why I define business. So business means any day that the system, the ento- the as the system is actually open, running. And operating. So even for like if something were to happen on a Friday afternoon, um, and a student had to be searched. Then the the school would uh drop dead date would be to have that out to the parent on that Tuesday. So um, let's keep going, Cindy. And then I have um the uh for good cause. So this was something that Dennis recommended. That for good cause, the request for an administrative review, review may be extended beyond the thirty calendar days. And I think that language was to reflect if something, you know, something might happen that the parent uh did not get. Wasn't able to receive the, receive the the notice for whatever reason it might be. Um, uh, that um they would bring that to the attention of the of the um system to say, can I, you know. Can you give me a little bit more time than thirty days because because of whatever the situation is that happened for the parent? And then if you continue down. That's it. So one of the things that was also brought up, I think, uh, um, Dr. Z Miller brought this up was the fact that. Maybe we should be using um like a certified mail or return receipt requested. But actually, return receipt requested actually costs money. And certified mail, though, either uh the issue has to do with, then the parent is supposed to sign off that they received it. So that we know that they got it. But uh often what happens, um, and I only know this from experience working in a school system. Where we would send really important notices out to parents to say, he certified it, uh, so they would have to sign off that they got it. And we never heard back from the parent and they actually did get it. And so it was. It, but they didn't sign. It was a very odd, like craziness going on with the US Postal. So my my recommendation would be, though, I understand exactly what the the, what the purpose of this is, is just to ensure the parent gets notice. So um, I was thinking, though, instead of putting that much detail into this, to this policy per se. Um, and I think Dennis, you might have recommended this also, and I think it's a good idea, is that. Uh, because there definitely will be an administrative procedure that goes along with this policy that in that administrative position, procedure. And and I'm going to uh also ask some school staff to help us with that administrative procedure. Because they, I they, I'm, I know they are dealing many times in situations where they have to get information out to parents. And give parents notice about a array of kinds of, you know, things they deal with. And then we can come up with something that make, that is, you know, it's helping us to ensure that that parent does receive that notice. Um, so if you're good with that, I I think this reflected all the changes that were requested at the last meeting.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um, so the floor is now open for discussion and comments. I do want to flag that we have eight other. Pieces of policies to discuss. So please be mindful of, you know, the comments that you give. If you feel good about this and it's in a good place, then I think we can hold those comments for. Other more robust discussions. Uh, I will now turn to um Chair Fields.
Thank, uh, thank you, Ms. Welsh, for that. And I do feel good about the policy. Uh, I do believe that they have something called confirmed delivery.
Oh, okay.
That that it's not confirmed receipt, but they can confirm that an item has been delivered to an address. And that's something that we may want to think about.
Okay.
In in terms of trying to make sure that we have some degree of confidence that the notice was delivered.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion? Um, and that's with the additional piece, Ms. Welsh, of uh the administrative um um procedure versus that being included in the policy. So that is the additional piece.
I I I moved that we, I'm sorry, Ms. Welsh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, are you saying, uh, but Chair Briggs that I should be putting language in there that says the AP will address this? Are you just saying we know now that the AP will trust it? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
I'm just addressing your recommendation that we're gonna.
Okay, perfect. Got it.
Chair Fields?
Yes, I move that we uh move this item for action. Yes, I move that we, uh, move this item for action.
Okay, great. So, Mrs. Welsh, thank you so much, um, uh, student bourbon, uh, Rivera Forbes. Um, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee. On the new policy and bring it back, uh, to the next policy, uh, meeting for, um, action. So we're gonna move on to item four point four and four point five, um, which includes, um, student use of social media in schools. Policy and then policy fifty-one thirty-two portable electronic devices in schools, which we decided to combine together. At our previous, um, Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh.
I'd say Briggs, weren't you supposed to vote or not? Did you vote?
We, um, we didn't have to vote. No, we didn't have to vote for that specific action.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Um, so, Ms. Welsh, I, I, um, I yield the floor to you to provide the committee with an update on the new policy. Student use of social media in schools and policy fifty-one thirty-two portable electronic devices in schools.
So, uh, what I did was I took what was in, um, the portable, the, the two policies and basically put them together. Some of the stuff was actually repetitive, so I was able to eliminate certain things. But then, as you go into the policy. You'll see that, um, it reflects that, um. Uh, first part, I'll talk about use of social media and then the second part will be use of PEDs in the schools. Um, and then it breaks it out and then, um, the, the last part has to do with implementation and responsibility. And the, um, two areas, I think there was a question about whether or not, um. There's, this is addressed in the stu- students' right, um, rights and responsibilities handbook and the code of conduct in terms of. Um, um, using like PEDs or social media inappropriately. And so. Under bullying and the, in the students', uh, code of conduct, that does address cyberbullying. And then if you, then there's a whole section that has to do with technology. Um, and the fact of, uh, for example, being respectful to adults and peers. Uh, in using your technology. Uh, now they're not specific to actual, uh, like social media, but it is, it's. But it's the same idea that it's a broad statement that, that they expect, uh, students to be respectful to each other and to adults. And then also that they, um, do not create or access or distribute offensive, obscene bullying or otherwise inappropriate materials. Which was another concern. And then, um, I think that was it. And then the other question had to do with. Um, the, uh, that came up had to do with, um, the impact of using, um, PEDs in schools. And, um, uh, this policy does not say we, that they can't use PEDs in schools. It's saying there's basically a time and a place for it. And when a teacher says, no, we're not, please put your PEDs away, you're supposed to put your PEDs away. But they, but the, uh, conversation in the last meeting went around the idea of. Uh, what impact does the use of PEDs have on students? Basically their, their, uh, well-being. Uh, and, you know, um, and their operation throughout the school day. So what I did was, because there will be, um. A policy that I AP administrative procedure, that's definitely going to go with that. And at that point, I think there can be some inde- detailed, um, language related to, uh, conducting a survey or whatever. Whatever the method will be in which they'll gather that information, but to ensure that it does happen. I did put that under implementation responsibilities, the superintendent slash designated. Will gather information regarding the impact of using social media and PEDs in schools. And then that the AP can actually go into the detail of what information they're going to gather.
Right. Thank you so much again, Ms. Welsh, Mrs. Welsh. Um, the floor is now open for discussion and comments. Okay, colleagues, um, should these policies, this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion?
I move for this policy to be moved for further action. My apologies. Should, I didn't know what name to read because I know they're combined. So are we just putting it under?
I think that's, I think that was a quote, you answered the quote, the, the motion was if the policy should be moved for action. So you said yes, um, to that. Okay, necessarily need a second for it, but, uh, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. So, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee. On the two policies and bring, um, them back to the next PNG meeting for action. Um, so we're now going to move to item four point six, policy zero one two five, non-discrimination. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on policy zero one two five, non-discrimination.
Okay, um, Cindy, will you please post it, please? So this, this policy, it was actually just like a one pager. That basically said, you were not going to discriminate and if you think you've been discriminated against, these, this is who you need to contact. So this, I actually did pretty much a major rewrite of the policy and talked about the fact that, um. First of all, that the, the, um, Board of Education is committed to providing and maintaining an educational workplace environment free from any form of unlawful. Discrimination and that the board will promote compliance with all federal, state and local non-discrimination laws. So that we can ensure that students, employees and third parties are provided equal opportunity. Um, both in the workplace and educational programs and activities. So then if you go down further, um. Um, Cindy, if you'll scroll down, please, uh, it's, uh, the, and the purpose is the same purpose. It's just to really explain. Uh, what's the expectations are in terms of not discriminating against anyone. And then if in fact there you, there is, um, you need to report it, um, then who would you report it to? So if I then added, there's a lot of definitions I added, said that were very clear. In terms of all the areas at which you could be discriminated against. And then the actual definition of discrimination goes into a lot of detail. Um, and then if you move this, uh, scroll down further, Cindy. I do have a definition of disability in there and then employee, that would be all full-time, part-time and temporary or substitute PGPS employees. Um, and then there's, uh, information about gender identity. And then if you scroll down, an ethnic, uh, ethnicity. Then there's genetic information, genetic testing, which is important, especially, um, that has in the past come up. Um, not in this system per se, but in the, um. And work environments where people were applying for jobs and had to go through different types of either giving genetic information or, or. Or, you know, being willing to have genetic testing occur in order to be hired. Um, and then it keeps going, more definitions, uh, for protected classes. And then we had definition of parent and person and then personal characteristics. So many times, um, a person is, um, uh, their personal characteristics are all the things that we talk about. But also even, um, uh, we talk about, um, uh, just, uh. Uh, it's very specific to even things like how a person might look or how a person might talk or how a person might. Any of those types of things. So it's very, very broad and includes a lot of different areas. So I did include all that. Um, and then we, if you keep going, we have definition for race and then we keep going further. Religion and then retaliation because what we don't want, and you'll see language in the policy that talks about. We, we encourage people if they think they've been discriminated against or they think someone else has been discriminated against, that they report that discrimination. And we certainly don't want anyone to be retaliated against when, if they do report. And then if you keep going further. Um, then sex and then sexual orientation. So this, um, this policy, so I, what I did in the first. Paragraph of this under application, under the standards is I, we have a lot of policies. That do address different aspects or different groups of people that could be discriminated against. So. I said that this policy applies to all allegations, uh, by PCBS students, employees, third parties that may, that have been. Uh, subjected to discriminations. And the, the provisions of this policy are to align with the board policies. Uh, for inclusive environments for LGBTQIA plus people. Uh, board policy zero one zero four title nine, board policy four one eight five workplace bullying, board, board policy five one one nine point three. Pay, and parent, uh, parenting students and board policy five one four three bullying, harassment or intimidation. And the implementing administrative procedures that go with those. So the whole idea is, is that this is sort of a. You know, the overall picture or non-discrimination, but it does align with all the, all of your other policies that do address, uh, uh, discrimination. Uh, and then if you pers- uh, go further, um, and then, so then we talk about employment discrimination. And, and so if you recall, last year, there was a policy that came up that had to do with hiring or something and it. It, it, it was like really, uh, it said you must first advertise and you must first accept, read the application or whatever. Be very, everyone agreed that was sort of, it was sort of, I don't know, very, uh, there, there wasn't a very useful policy. Except for the fact that it said you would not discriminate i- in the hiring process. So that there was a decision that we would reset that policy. Once this policy, the non-discrimination policy reflected that not only are we not going to discriminate against our employees. Um, we are not going to discriminate against any of the applicants that we have that we're not, you know, are trying to get a job here. So. It talks about that we should not, we, uh, PGPS shall not fail or refuse to hire, discharge or otherwise discriminate. Against any individual with respect to individuals' compensation, terms or conditions or employment because of, and then it goes down the list. Uh, actual perceived personal characteristics or if you keep scrolling Cindy. Or the individual refusal to subject, uh, to submit to a genetic test and make available the results of a genetic test. So. There's actual, uh, language, I think it's in the state government article that talks about this. At first I was like, why is that in here? But evidently, this has been an issue and there is state law that clearly lays out that you can, that, um. An applicant, any, an applicant or employee or a third party do not have to be subjected or submit to genetic testing. Or provide any, uh, genetic information. So that, that whole section, that can, uh, talks about that. And then. It goes into, well, limit, segregate or classify its employees or applicants for, uh, employment in any way that would deprive or tend to deprive. Any individual of, uh, their employment opportunities or otherwise adversely affect the individual's status as an employee. Because of perceived characteristics or refusal to submit to a genetic test or make available the results of a genetic test. And then it says PGPS shall not require genetic tests or genetic information as a condition of hiring or determining benefits. And then the other section that we do have, and, uh, it's interesting because of the conversation on the previous policy seventeen hundred. Where, um, the question came up, are there gaps in these, in different areas? And in this particular policy, I have that PGPS shall not, uh, fail or refuse to make reasonable accommodations for a known disability. Of any otherwise qualified employer applicant for employment. Reasonable accommodations to also be provided consistent with applicable law and with respect to other personal characteristics. So then if you, uh, proceed further, Cindy. Um, then we get into the student part, which says, uh, prohibited discrimination in educational programs and activities. And then it's very similar to the employment one, only in this instance, it has to do with students. And it says expects all students, employees and third parties to conduct themselves in a manner that, that demonstrates mutual respect without regard to. An individual's actual perceived personal characteristics. And then it says the board prohibits, and if you'll proceed down a little bit further. The board prohibits the use of language on or display of images and symbols that promote hate. And can be reasonably expected to cause substantial disruption to school or district operations or activities. This prohibition will not be used, however, to prevent responsible discussion of such language, images or symbols for educational purposes. The board shall not fail or refuse to make reasonable accommodations for known disability of a student. Uh, as required by state and federal law, um, and then the same stuff that was in the employment piece about, uh, our employees. Reasonable accommodations to also be provided consistent with applicable law with respect to other personal characteristics. So then, from there, the next section talks about discriminate, uh, discrimination, report complaints. And it is the expectation that, uh, within twenty-four hours of observing or learning about any type of alleged discrimination. Against a student, employer or third party, all employees are responsible to report to the Office of Equity Assurance, um, that discrimination. Uh, and then that there is the expectation again, that all employees and third parties must cooperate fully with any inquiry or investigation. Of discrimination. And, um, and then it talks further about, uh, upon the nature of the offense, an employer student. Who commits discrimination is subject, subjected to disciplinary, disciplinary action. So it talks about that whole piece. And then it does reference, so for employees, it could, depending on the severity of the action, it could include disciplinary. Action up to and including termination. Uh, and then for a student, it could be include expulsion, again, depending on the severity. And consistent with the student code of conduct. And then if you'll keep, if you'll proceed further, uh, it says, um. That they, um, that the, the, uh, these consequences will be, uh, uh. Issued in compliance with applicable board policies, administrative procedures and also vendor contracts. For a third party who commits discrimination, because within the contract language and if you read, uh, the contracts, uh. There's a section that does talk about discrimination. Um, and then, um. The other thing is in addition to, if you have, you yourself have participated in a discriminatory act. But the other is if you knowingly allow or tolerate discrimination or fail to report it, you also could, uh, end up be. Being subjected to disciplinary action. So then it just talks about filing the complaint. Um, and I did not go into a lot of detail because if you look at our other policies, there's much more depth. In those when it talks about the actual filing of the complaint. And then if you proceed further, Cindy. And then it talks about implementation. And I did, um, say that the super student superintendent will provide an annual report to the board. On reported discrimination incidents against students, employees and third parties, because I think it's important as a school system. That we, um, have a handle on, on, uh, what's happening out there in terms of the culture in our schools. Both from an employment standpoint as well as a student standpoint in terms of how we're all treating each other. So. I think that would be an important piece that the board might want. And then I will say, there's loads and loads and loads of laws that I listed. That, um, that this, this policy is connected to. If you keep scrolling down Cindy, uh, and you'll see all those. Keep going. It's pretty extensive. And then all the board policies that we have that do address discrimination. So, um, so that's it in a nutshell for that policy.
Great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Uh, the floor is now open for discussion and comments. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands. The one thing I want to say, Mrs. Welsh, is that, um, I, I like, I love the end, uh, where you included the piece around the superintendent tracking this report. Um, and, and I would just, just, uh, love like an additional piece around like subgroups, like, you know, particular groups that might be vulnerable. Um, more vulnerable than, and then others.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Um, but otherwise, um, I think it's great. I would like to personally, I'm not sure how others feel, but. From my stance, I would like to just have a little bit more time to look at it, since it's such an important policy, just to make sure that it's, um, it was very comprehensive, but just one more review. Um, so I would love for it to be brought up for further discussion, um, with any, any kind of additional flags we may add. Um, but that's my stance. Um, so colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion?
I agree with your assessment, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. I think, um, it's a comprehensive policy. And you should probably take another look at it, uh, to make sure that it's all in order.
Okay. So, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy zero one two five. And bring it back to the next PNG meeting for further discussion. So we're gonna move on to, uh, item four point seven, policy eleven twenty. Public Information Act requests. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on policy eleven twenty, Public Information Act requests.
So Cindy, would you please post it? Okay, so this policy, um, actually, we actually, uh, did this policy and it was approved back on June of. Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, excuse me. Um, so it's a pretty, a new policy, um, uh, you know, young revised policy. And there's just very minor changes that were added to the policy. If you scroll down Cindy to under the standard section. You'll see, um, and this is based on a House bill that was passed this past, in the twenty twenty-three legislative session that expanded. What was considered to be personal information, uh, uh, according to Maryland Public Information Act. So that information was included in terms of, uh, personal telephone numbers, uh, cell phone numbers and personal email addresses. That, which is, then we can deny that request when, um, they're asking for that type of personal information. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, it's a tiny little change in here. Keep going. That's not superintendent because that was CEO before, but superintendent, okay, in conjunction with, um. Wait a minute. wait a minute. Oh, requests including, uh, are covered, but no, keep going. There might be some other, I thought there was one more place. Hold on. Uh, I guess it's, uh, go back up. So it is in conjunction with administrative procedures five one two five and five one three five. So that change was made, that little bit of language is because, um, um, and I think when, uh, and, um, OGC looked at this and added this, and I think she actually, um, somehow lost what she crossed out. But anyway, the idea being that, um, there is when you have, uh, like information that's protected by FERPA, um, the requirement, so, and certain information is, protects certain information is, and previously, I think we took the stance that you'll have to go through the FERPA to be able to, um, uh, give out any information that's being requested and it won't be, we won't accept it through an MPIA. And the actual, uh, compliance board for public information, um, the Public Information Act's request, um, said no, that if you get a request to MPIA for this particular information, that, um, we are required to share that information. So that's why that was put in there to align with those two administrative procedures. Other than that, that's very minor changes that were made to this policy.
Great. Thank you so much, Miss, Mrs. Welsh. Uh, so colleagues, should this policy be moved for action? Or I'm sorry, the floor is now open for discussion and comments. Uh, Chair Fields.
I just want to say that I think that this policy is really important to the issue of transparency in our school district. Um, and that as a school district, we should be mindful of timeliness and responding to, um, requests, uh, for information. Um, as well as reporting, um, at the end of the year, um, how many requests we have fulfilled. Um, these laws are in place to provide some level of balance for the public to be able to hold a public body accountable. And so I think it's important that, uh, we make sure that this policy in particular is adhered to because some of the frustration from a citizen perspective is often when you request information. Um, the length of time it takes to get the information that you've requested. And so I think, you know, the reasonableness of fees in terms of securing documents that people have requested are all important. But I think what's really important for the public to understand is that this is a policy that provides some checks and balances so that as a citizen, um, you have the right to information um, uh, for the business of the school district, um, as we can.
Great. Thanks, Chair Fields. Uh, I'll turn to student member, um, Rivera Forbes.
Hello, everyone. I also think this policy is definitely very, um, beneficial. And I think it's going to further strengthen the connection between the PG CPS community. I'm so sorry for the sort of throw. Um, the PG CPS community and our Board of Education, which is really one of our biggest priorities. We want to have that transparency and connection. So I really like the policy. Thank you, Ms. Welsh.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, so colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion?
The vice chair, I would suggest that you move this, uh, policy for, for action.
So, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy eleven twenty and bring it back to the next PNG meeting for action. We're going to move on to item four point eight, Policy fifteen hundred, Parent and Community Advisory Council. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Policy fifteen hundred, PCCAC.
Okay. Let's see how we go this, this time with this policy. Um, so if you, uh, Cindy will, uh, scroll down on this. And again, I did the same thing. I, um, oh, you know what? I meant to put in a definition. I will be putting a definition into this, uh, into that policy. I'm, I'm sorry. I totally missed it. I want to add, one of the que- questions that came up, what had to do with, uh, who is a, on the committee? Who is a committee member that is considered in good standing? And I wanted to add in there that, um, they met the requirements for, uh, being on, um, on the committee as well as attendance. Um, in, in attending the meetings, because if you have a, a committee member that never shows up, then that really, you know, I think that can be a real problem. So I'm sorry I missed that. I, I, I needed to put that in there, but I will put that in. And then if you'll scroll down Cindy. Uh, so, um, uh, the chair of the PCCAC had said that she, uh, in her comments at the last meeting, she had said that she didn't want, she wanted to make it very clear that the liaison, uh, whether it's a board liaison or superintendent liaison is not a voting member of PCCAC, which they have not been voting, uh, since, since this, we started up last year. But, but now it's in the language too. And now, and then the next, the next topic has to do with the Board of Education shall appoint the following members, um, and it had to do with recommended by superintendent, which has been a major conversation. So I went back to look first of all at our previous PCCAC policies. And if you look at back at two thousand thirteen, it did have the same language it's in right now, uh, where it said the Board of Ed shall appoint members, uh, recommended by the superintendent. That language started back in two thousand thirteen. And then when the policy was revised, I want to say in twenty-one or twenty-two, it was, that language was there again. And so that's why the language was there. And, um, something that you said, uh, Vice Chair Briggs, you said that it, it would be not uncommon when you had vacancies that maybe even have fifty applicants, um, that would apply to be on the PCCAC. And so, uh, now this is ju- this is a, a thought. If you don't like it, certainly we can change it. But this whole issue, because I think it's an area of contention, is where it says in the policy that the, the board member for their district is the one who's going to appoint the PCCAC member to be the representative for the, that, the, their district. But it's based on the superintendent's, um, uh, recommendation. And if in fact that you do want to continue with that language, that the superintendent does provide the recommendation. And I will say, I did speak with the chief of staff and she shared with me that superintendent does want to be actively involved in PCCAC and this p- process. Um, that I thought possibly, instead of just picking one person, because quite honestly, what's the value of the board member appointing something, someone if the superintendent's already told you who to appoint? Versus if you had, let's say you have ten applicants for your district, the superintendent looks at all the recommendations and says, I think, you know, I don't know, one through eight seem like really good possible candidates, you know, to be, uh, on, in representing your district. And then the board member actually does get to choose. So instead of just one person that the superintendent is providing, he would actually provide a list of recommended applicants. Now, this is just a thought and I, I'm certainly open to anything else that you might want to consider. But I did put that in there. And then if you proceed further, um, again, I added it so that it's clear that each, the districts, that each appointment shall be made by the board member representing the respective district from the list of the superintendent's recommended applicants. And then, so now the question it comes down to, because I, again, we still, I still haven't heard the final, like, what is it? And I don't know if this is something as a committee you want to vote on. But do you want the, do you want the parent who, the, um, parent who the twelfth grader is only in one year and they, they, um, and then they must leave at the end of the first year, or do you want them to stay for both years? I think I am almost thinking, because we haven't, uh, that you might just have to vote on this to decide which thing you want. I don't care which one, but one of them has to stay and one of them has to go. So that, I haven't touched that yet because I, I don't know where you all stand as a committee. And then if you proceed further down, um, that this was something else that, uh, the chair of the committee had brought, uh, the council had brought up at the last board meeting, uh, had to do with, could we move the date up? Um, so that we have everything in place by the time the new, um, PCCAC is in operation. So I did put those dates in now, uh, uh, you know, I'm not the one that deals with applications and all these other things. So I, I would have to really, you know, defer to you to see if that's too early, but that was the recommendation. And then I had made a mistake before and I was pointing out, I, I had said that would like, if asking those student board members, they wanted to be a member and no, it's actually be a liaison. So I did correct that and took out member. And then the actual, it wasn't a student advisory council, it was a student member of the board, SMOB advisory council. So I did put that language in. And then if you proceed further, um, and actually, I wanna, I just thought of something. Can you proceed, uh, uh, scroll up a little bit Cindy to where it said, keep going. Oh, so the number four. So actually, if you look at the definition of the, of liaison, um, I'm just thinking, I don't know, uh, the superintendent may serve as a liaison to the PCCAC or designate a staff member. I'm just thinking, if the purpose is to relay information, the liaison's position is to relay information, um, to like the superintendent, then I'm not sure the superintendent should serve as a liaison. Maybe that they should designate a person. That's just a thought. I was just thinking, I would keep, proceed down further. That was there before. Um, oh, so that was the other thing, was this whole issue of whether or not throughout the PCCAC is meeting with, like, they, uh, is when it says board, is it meeting with the board leadership? Is it meeting with the full board? Who's it meeting with? And, um, I think I, what I heard was I got the impression that people are saying it's the full board. So I just went ahead and put the language in full board so that there's no, no confusion about it. And then if you can proceed a little bit further, keep going. So the only thing, uh, and this goes, um, to Vice Chair Briggs, your concern about this application process. So I, and I, and I, and I, I mean, I'm open to anything. Ultimately, the board office is going to be the ones that are going to be, you know, getting the application up and posted and, you know, gathering the information and everything. But I don't, and I, I don't know if, um, either one, either liaison wants to take it on full hand or you want to collaborate in terms of things you want in your application, or I don't know how extensive your process is to get the application ready and get it posted on the website. So, um, I did, I did include that language and then said in collaboration with. Because once, once it's done, I would think, once you have the application and you know what the process is, I would think that for most years, it would just be a standard operating procedure for the board office to be, you know, posting the application and, and, you know, at a certain time. So I don't know, that's something that, you know, I, whatever you think we need to change, we can do. And I believe that's everything that I put changes to based on the conversation from the last meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Um, and I will start with acknowledging Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you so much. And, um, I'm sure I'll be back for a second round regarding this. I'm very passionate about this. I think the first thing is, um, we continue to be out of compliance. And I think we said that here a number of times. And so we just need to get back in compliance. And I recognize we're doing this in the future. Um, but we have a policy right now that we really need to invoke. So as we continue forward and look at what needs to be inside of the policy moving forward, I like to put some timing around when there is a vacancy. Let's put that within fifteen days. Um, I'm putting a timeline so someone else can make a modification if necessary. But within fifteen days, we'll have an application that's available to be able to send out. The gap that I'm trying to fill right here is that when we don't have people in places, then we're missing the opportunity for our districts to re- be represented. I'm namely concerned about District Nine, but I'm concerned about PG CPS as a whole. And so I want to make sure we have language around the expectations of timing, because for this one in particular, um, we have three that have yet to be advertised. And to me, that's problematic. And so I want to make sure we have language as we move forward for that, so we're not sitting on it. Um, the second, and then we can come back and figure out what we do at this point, because even though we're going to be able to move in past whatever we're saying right now, we have a policy that's in effect right now. Um, particularly because these three are not in compliance in our, in our, in our current state. The, the next piece that I wanted to talk about was, I am in favor, actually, um, Ms. Welsh, I hadn't really thought about it. It's such a good idea of, um, the superintendent actually providing a list. And with that list, what I actually like to say is if we don't put any districts as related to that, the reason I'm saying that is because I want to reduce any bias, any bias that comes, because that's the, the point of, um, what we're doing here is not just that the, 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 me in District Nine select my friend who's a parent to come on, but it's also that the superintendent in partnership with the administration, that the administration can take a look at it, which I am in favor of, um, without any bias of districts, then come back to us with the list. And then the person in the district can actually make the determination based on a recommendation, because a list probably gives me multiples. And that would be, um, that would be good for me to be able to choose from that list as well, so it doesn't seem singular. Although I'm in favor of the current process that we seem not to be following right now. Um, I'm okay with that compromise because I think that that's absolutely fair and includes both the administration and the, um, and, and us collectively as a board, as a partnership, um, as well as our parents who are doing this voluntary work, to be honest. I think, um, I talked about timing, I talked about, um, that, uh, the other piece is I am so ready to move this forward so that we can begin doing work. But what I want to make sure of is what is going to govern us? Because I feel like there's been this waiting game until we get to the next one, so we can say we're in the next one. But where are we following our previous policy or our current policy? Because we need to get in compliance. And so that's just the third piece that I have. And I don't know if that's a question to Robin Welsh, who's told us that we're out of compliance, or to the chair or the vice chair who's acting in the chair's position today. Um, so I'd like to know what we can do now before this policy is moved, uh, to get in compliance. And then in the future, for us to be in compliance with the new standards that we're putting in place. Thank you so much.
And, uh, so can I just, uh, say one thing? So I did put in language that said they will advertise the vacancy. The board will advertise the vacancy no later than one month of being notified of the vacancy. So you're saying you would like to see fifteen days?
Yeah, a month is thirty days. And I recognize that we're all busy. We're doing this part-time. So I can be amenable to thirty days. Absolutely. Thirty days. I just didn't hear, honestly, I didn't hear the timeline and accountability that was associated with it. Um, so thank you for that. And I think that there's two types of creative vacancies. There is the vacancy of, um, and hopefully we don't have this in the future, actually. So we probably will only have one. There's the vacancy that comes because, um, somebody's out of compliance, like they're no longer a parent. Right. So for instance, they're in twelfth grade. We didn't, I didn't hear that piece right there. I'm sorry. Um, I'm a, I'm, I'm amenable to, um, having a twelfth grade parent on there. Absolutely. But recognizing that at the end of that app, when they graduate from PG CPS, they have to then step off. So we appreciate their time while they're here. We think that it's value added. We want them to be able to come into the fold and we should make that known in my estimation. But when you are no longer a parent of a PG CPS scholar, then you're no longer on a PCCAC, which is the parent advisory committee.
Vice Chair, I hate to interrupt, but I do want to just be mindful of time. And if there's a-
Thank you so much.
That you want, then we can go there. Um, so I'm going to move to Chair.
Quick question for Ms., um, Ms. Walker. You said the superintendent provided a list of the list of candidates?
Yes, a list of their recommended candidates per what, um, Ms. Robin Welsh already introduced. Yes. The list of the, of their, um, recommended candidates minus district numbers. Thank you.
Okay, one, one more question for clarity. When you ask about the, what would govern us? Is that part of the policy or are you just asking a general question?
Um, I don't remember saying that, but the policy will govern us. So I don't know what I said, but I meant that.
Yeah, I think you were asking.
Oh, I know what it was.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. Thank you for that clarity. What I was saying is in our current state today, December interdate, the policy that is governing us today is our current policy. And I'm saying that when we need to make modifications based on our current policy that we know we're out of compliance today. And then I'm saying, when we go forward and vote on this new policy, which I'm going to be aligned with pending the, the, the information that Ms. Welsh is having today, I'll even make the recommendation, is then, then we'll be governed by that after we get ourselves in compliance. That's what I was saying. Okay.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We're going to turn to Chair Fields. Chair Fields, you are muted.
Sorry about that. So until we amend this policy, the current policy is in force. And so for, or to become compliant with the current policy, need to go back and fill those vacancies based upon the superintendent's recommendations. We have to be clear in this language that superman, superintendent's appointment, I'm sorry. We have to be clear in this language that board members recommend and the superintendent consults and then points. Because it is a superintendent's appointment. So whatever vacancies we have, the board can easily get in compliance by filling those vacancies according to the policy as it stands today. by filling those vacancies according to the policy as it stands today. And then going forward, this new policy would be in effect. I also think that it's important that the superintendent is named as a liaison. And if he wants to substitute someone else, that should be his preference. I think it's really important that the chief executive officer of the district have a relationship with this advisory council. Because unlike the board, he is responsible for day-to-day management of the school district. And that relationship needs to be there between superintendent and parents. I like the direction of this. I would concur with Vice Chair Walker in terms of the turnover. So this is truly going to be a parents advisory council. Those who serve in the council should be parents. So if you begin your service as a parent, say you're a 12th grade parent, or if you are a parent, and then your child transfers to another school district or to a private school, that person should be replaced. You want active parents of PG CPS students on this council. Because that's what makes it truly representative of parents. And that's not to say that someone who is a parent and who then loses that parent status doesn't have anything to contribute. But I think if we want to make this a truly parent council, then let's make sure that they are current parents of PG CPS students who are on P CAC. That, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you so much, Chair Fields. I'm going to turn to Chair Mickens Murray.
Does P CAC, I thought it required some community folks, and I also thought it required some folks from the unions. So are you saying that everyone needs to have a child in the system?
I'm sorry.
No, that was not my-
I didn't mean to sort of-
That was not, that was not my-
Clarity, I'm asking for clarity.
Are you, can you direct your question to a specific person, please?
Ms. Welsh, yes. Ms. Welsh?
Yes. So, so what it's saying is that for the representatives of each district-
The district, okay.
That must be the parent, that, that's where the parent is. In addition to that, we would have four members that would be appointed representing from faith-based nonprofit communities, civil organizations, labor unions, and business sectors. So that's the community members.
No, I'm good. Thank you. I missed the piece.
Okay, thank you so much, Board Chair Mickens Murray. Okay, all right. And the, I'll just add an additional piece, Mrs. Welsh. So I really appreciate the changes that you made to the policy. I like the idea of with the, the voting, the board member, the board members voting on a 12th grade parent and whether they should stay. I think, you know, if they've given service or if the board just votes unilaterally or collectively, that they'd like to have a parent removed because of their feelings about it, then I think that that's fair. And that probably is like a really good approach to it. And then I also think, just from having done the, the application process, that it is, it's a pretty, it's a pretty significant lift. I think to your point, though, it should be like a standard operating procedure that should, should be in place. It wasn't this time, and I know we've done it before. I know we've also made recent changes to P CAC. But it is a lot for, I think, anyway, and especially I think for, for the board and the all the many different tasks we have from research to the readings to preparing for, you know, hearings to, you know, engage in our community. There's just so much we're responsible for doing. And it is a significant lift that I think, you know, the board office and the parent or the superintendent's liaison, in partnership with the board liaison, I think that's a good piece. Should, and I think maybe we can kind of divvy out the workload there around how much they should lift. Because I think it's a lot for a board member. It should be easier, hopefully, in the future. And then the one thing I did want to address was I just think that there's a piece of, of perhaps misinformation. So I appreciate the clarification that we do have the current policy that exists and that's governing this process. So I know that right now we are still getting clarity, Ms. Welsh, around the superintendent's liaison, which it says is the chief executive office liaison, working with the board office for the application process. So it is a part of the pause is that we want to understand who exactly, according to the policy right now and being in alignment with it, is responsible for kind of these additional vacancies. And then the other clarification, sorry, one- The other clarification is that the superintendent did sign off on, on current P CAC members that were recently voted on by the board. He provided recommendations that were exactly the same except for District Five, which was a different P CAC member. And then, of course, my district, we had a recommendation for that person, but that person was no longer available. So that one also differed. But we'll say that the process is that, of course, the final selection of all the candidates that everyone had access to comes from the board member that represents the district. So for the union, for the other district seat, the, the, the superintendent signed off on those folks. And the only difference is for the ones that were not available, or either he didn't agree with it. And, and we voted on District Five collectively, and that was the poor Dr. Miller, Z Miller's responsibility. So I do think that they're all in compliance with the policy, just for clarity's sake, based on the process. And we did have communication about that. So I will stop talking. That's it.
Can I get, oh, I'm sorry, there's another hand. Go ahead.
Well, do you want to respond to what I have to say? I still have eight seconds, so.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm still, although I think I didn't express myself very well. When it came to the parent of the 12th grader, I, I think all I was saying is that the committee itself here should make a decision, vote on or do whatever that, that you need to do to make a decision about how you want to handle this. And, and since you vote on a lot of things, this might be something maybe you do want to vote on, I don't know. But just so that you have consensus that you don't want the parent or you do want the parent after the first year. So that was, and so I don't think I was very clear when I was expressing it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I will now turn to Vice Chair Walker.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Welsh, I think you were very clear. I, I think I misunderstood what Briggs, so this is a question for Mr. Briggs on the 12th grade. I think I heard you say that then the board gets to vote. It's my recommendation, strong recommendation that here we put it in policy. The policy is you must be a parent of a PG CPS scholar in order to be on the P CAC. It is a parent advisory committee. Therefore, whether you enter in 12th grade or whether you enter as a public school person that then goes to private school or leaves, when you are no longer a parent of a PG CPS scholar, which includes 12th grade, you no longer have a sitting seat on our P CAC, that, that becomes vacant. And I think I heard you say something else. So one, I wanted to clarify that before my second question. Did, because you, I thought you said something different than that.
So Ms. Welsh just clarified what I was referring to. She was saying that the P and G committee would vote on the 12th grade parent versus the full board. So that's what-
Yeah, so what, okay, that's what I thought I heard you say, actually. So what I'm recommending is that we put it in policy, so we don't have to come back and continuously vote. The policy that we're talking about tonight should read, in my estimation, that you must be a parent of a PG CPS scholar. Therefore, as related to a 12th grader, you are a PG CPS parent until your child leaves or graduates from Prince George's County Public Schools. As such, you become a vacancy, your seat becomes a vacancy, which then sparks what then becomes our 30-day period for your vacancy to be filled. That is the difference of what we're saying. I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm missing why we need to continuously come back and have us vote on something when we are talking in a policy and governance committee today of what a parent, what, what a parent is. We know what a parent is in PG CPS, I'm sure it's defined somewhere. So if we're saying the same thing, I'm all in. If we're not, then I'm challenging that so that our language can be super clear on defining what a parent for PG CPS is. So that by 12th grade, if you're on, we welcome you until your scholar leaves. That creates the vacancy that then sparks us to have an opening. The second piece, and then you can come back to it, the second piece is the piece I heard around compliance. I'm looking to understand, based on the compliance, the, the, the statute that we have today, when we are going to get in compliance. I think I heard you say we're in compliance, but we've talked for three months, if not more, on this call of why we continue to be out of compliance with P CAC. I need to fill the position for District Nine, and there's multiple districts that need that seat. And for some reason, we haven't filled it. So we have actually a policy now that would allow us to do that. And so I'm just looking for help on when we can get in compliance for that. That's my second piece. And I think that Mr. Briggs can probably answer both of those questions for clarity.
Okay, well, first, I, I would say thank you for sharing what you had to share. I think probably to your first question, the, the recommendation, and this, these were two recommendations given by Mrs. Welsh, is something that the committee can vote on. So I think that essentially it sounds like if there's a difference in opinion or perspective about what the right approach is, and the probably the, the, you know, diplomatic approach here is to vote on it, and then whatever the majority vote is, we just go with that. So that would be my first answer to your question. The, the second piece is for the compliance. There, again, there's the policy that exists right now. You'll probably have a chance to review it again in board docs. But it says, the added language is that the board liaison and in, in, in coordination with the superintendent's liaison will work with the board office through the application process. What the current policy says is the superintendent's liaison will work with the board office for the application process. So we would be out of compliance with the policy if the board liaison were handling the application process. So it's really figuring out who's going to lead that next application process for those three applicants that we are trying to address based on compliance, based on alignment with the policy for those that are currently not parent. And it looks like we're out of time, so I'm going to turn to Chair Fields.
I think, I think the larger issue, it's not the application process. It is the superintendent's appointment, that you have a recommendation superintendent appoints. So I think the larger issue of compliance with the policy has to be brought back to the full board for a discussion, for the current P CAC. Going forward in terms of the language on parents, I don't want to overcomplicate this because the language is pretty clear in the current policy, and it should be clear in this policy, that you have to be a parent. So if you're not a parent, you can't be on P CAC representing one of those nine districts. You might be able to represent in some other way those other four seats if you fill the profile of those other four slots. But as a parent, you can't hold that seat if you're no longer a parent. And so I think we just need to be clear on the language for those nine seats about the parent representative. That if you lose that parent status, you cannot serve going forward. And I think that should resolve any confusion that we have about that parent role. Because those nine seats were designed specifically for the purpose of having parent representation from those districts. And you lose the, you lose the intent and integrity of P CAC if you violate that.
Thank you so much, Chair Fields. I will turn to Board Chair Mickens Murray.
Okay, this is a question for the lawyers. Legal guardian, does that count as a parent? Are you guys going to tease that out to make sure? Because you have a lot of blended families today. I mean, so are you, is it, how are you going to define parents?
So actually, we do have, we have definitions for parent-
That's what I thought.
Other different policies, and I think legal guardian falls right in there with parent. So if the, if it's the legal guardian that's taking care of the child versus the parent, I think that would be the same thing. I'm, I'm, in fact, there might even be, in one of the ones we just did this week today, that we have a definition for parent. I have to get back and look.
We have one, Ms. Welsh.
Okay, well, I'm just suggesting that because we're getting very definitive here. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair Mickens Murray. Chair Fields? You no longer have a comment?
That, that, that was the answer to the question, that the district does have a definition of a parent.
Okay, so I think what, what I'm hearing is that we have a few recommendations that were given by Mrs. Welsh. There may be some differences of opinion, and I think probably the democratic and, and appropriate way to address this is we can have a motion in the committee on particular recommendations to vote and just have that as an approach moving forward. So it sounds like we'd like a little bit more time for additional pieces to be added here. And, but, but I'll turn it over to you, colleagues. Should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote to have all parents on the P CAC about, and specifically around 12th grade or any other person, when they lose their status of parent as defined by PG CPS, they are no longer a member of the P CAC, sparking or triggering the next step as a vacancy for us to feel as appropriate by the policy.
Okay, and I just have one question about that before we vote on it.
Sure.
Is, are you referencing broadly the specific recommendation that Ms. Welsh mentioned? Or are you specifically talking about the recommendations she offered?
I think they're one and the same question. Can you ask those again, please? I didn't understand the difference in the two.
Yeah, are, are you just broadly speaking about like a, a specific recommendation that you'd like to see us vote on? Or is this in, in reference to the recommendation?
It's in reference to the policy that we're talking about right now. We're talking about the P CAC 1500. And there was a question as related to defining, not only defining a parent, which is already there, but we were specifically talking about 12th grade and what, who can sit on here that sparks action for a vacancy. So that is, and then you suggested, if I just heard you correctly, that we actually take a vote here so that then Robin Welsh knows exactly how to move forward. And so that's what I'm doing right now, is asking for a motion to be made so that we can be very clear on when we spark action for vacancy to be filled. And that's, that's what I'm sparking a motion for.
Okay, the only reason why I asked for clarity is because I know there are two recommendations that were offered, and it would be, be good for, just for the, I think, the sake of the discussion, if we could just vote on that so we can move forward with it. But before, before we-
Vote on what? I'm sorry. What do you want to vote on? Both?
There were two additional sub-bullets under, in the policy, and I think it's in board docs. If you want to look at it, it is highlighted in yellow, I believe, and it is for the district appointments in, in coordination with the superintendent.
Yeah, so I'm specifically, my vote to just clarify, because I think that's the piece that you were asking for clarity on, my specific vote at this time, because I think we need to take them individually so that they don't get confuddled. My specific one is regarding this specific action right here. So if you don't want to second it, I understand, but this is my vote for now.
Okay, no. Well, that's fine. I, I wanted to get clarity. It sounds like what you're saying is you have a recommendation that you'd like to put on the floor. So I will turn to Chair Fields before we move forward to vote.
I would just like to suggest that we simplify the language and simply say, a district representative on P CAC must be a parent as defined by the Prince George's County Public School System. Because that would end all confusion, that we use the district's current definition of a parent and the person who represents a district must conform with that definition of a parent. So it would be-
I'm happy to second that, as long as we have action, since that's a friendly amendment to my motion, as long as we have language that also says that it triggers the, the vacancy of which we will fill, because that's the gap we have right now.
All right, well, I, I hear, I, I, I hear, and I just want to make sure we're clear. So this is regarding the 12th grade students. If there is a parent that starts the year for P CAC with a student that's in 12th grade, and then the second year, they, they have a two-year term, and they don't have a child. We're going, we're now voting on the definition of a parent being, you have to have a child in PG CPS as the final, like-
We're not voting on a definition. A definition already exists. If Mr. Fields wants to restate his motion, it was really clear and nice and simple, it, it already exists. So Mr. Fields, do you want to restate it?
I, I just want to-
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I want to, I want to model this well, too. I want to make sure we're, we're, if we're being acknowledged, that we're just, we're speaking. So I do, I do want to model to not speaking out of turn, so I want to say, Chair-
I just want to clarify, because it's not just a situation of a parent of a 12th grade student. Could be a situation for a parent that moves out of the district, a situation with a parent that moves their child to a private school. Just simply say that the representative for a district on P CAC must be a parent as defined, as parent is defined by the Prince George's County Public School system. That way, you don't even have to talk about vacancy, because that says if you no longer are a parent, you can't be on P CAC. I just think we, we have to be very simple with our language, because we'll confuse everybody if we keep adding unnecessary verbiage. I think we should keep it nice and clear.
Great. Board Chair Mickens Murray?
As you're thinking through this part process, I think it conflicts to say you appointed, I mean, you are, yeah, appointed for two years and then accept. So if you're going to have some exceptions in there, the policy should reflect that. And then accept. So if you're going to have some exceptions in there, the policy should reflect that. In other words, if someone becomes a member of P C A C in the 12th grade, because that's the parent's passion. Then that parent needs to understand that you are not being appointed for two years. You have been appointed for one year. So you need something in the policy to, to show that discrimination.
Distinction. Okay, great. Thank you so much, uh, Board Chair Mickens Murray. So, um, Chair Fields, it sounds like, um, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Walker agree with your amendment to the specific motion that was on the floor. So if you can just repeat that, then I think we can kind of, we can start to vote.
Well, taking into consideration, uh, Chairman Mickens Murray, um, point. I think the language should say, as I previously stated, that, um, a representative. Of a district on P C A C must be a parent as parent is defined. By the Prince George's County Public School System. And it can be second exception, uh, in the event that a parent. Is appointed to serve a two-year term and relinquishes the parent status. That parent must be replaced. Because I think that gets to the point of we're appointing people for two years. That if they lose their parent status, then they have to relinquish, relinquish that seat on P C A C. Just so that we're covering all bases.
Before, before we vote, um, I want, I will acknowledge, um, uh, Board Member Dr. Juanita Miller.
Uh, I like the way, uh. Uh, Mr. Phil stated it, but it should be very simplistic to say it is a two-year term. That's it. And if a parent leaves, then that vacancy will be filled. You're not saying that they, they have to stay two years or their child, you know, you're just saying it's a two-year term. And I don't know why you need to put, uh, the length of the term, but you, I mean, I guess you do need to put it in there, but, um. I, I just think we're making it more complicated than it needs to be. Because, uh, just like we have, and I'm gonna give a classic example. We have a, um, a chair in place for this board. And in the law, uh, the policy it says for two years. But by June thirtieth, that seat will become vacant. So you, that, it's very clear that that person no longer will be able to serve on this board. So it's the same, the same concept. If a parent leaves or, uh, the child, the child graduates, the parent is gone as of June of that year. And then, uh, that summer or whenever the, uh, two liaisons, uh, get together. Uh, another announcement is put out. Simple as that. So parents know it's a two, and some may decide not to take it if it's a two-year term, knowing that their stu-, uh, their student. Is only going to be there, I mean, one more year or for that particular school year.
Okay. All right. Thank you, uh, Board Member Dr. Juanita Miller. Um, and I do ask, uh, our board staff if we can have a timer up, uh, moving forward for, um, speakers, um, just so we can keep track of time. I'm going to turn to, uh, Student Member of the Board, Rain Rivera Forbes.
One minute. But, um, Chair, would you like for a third round?
Yes, can we move to a third round, yes, of discussion about the specific amendment, amendment that's on the floor.
All right, can we put a motion on the floor, on the floor, sorry, for a third round and the time?
Um, can, yes, can we keep it, um, to, um, a minute? Is it okay if we can keep it to a minute?
Do we have a second for a third round for one minute?
Yes, I seconded it.
Great, it's been seconded. Um, so I will turn to, um, Student Member of the Board, Rivera Forbes.
All right, I'm pretty sure this is still my first round, but. But I do just have a quick point of clarification. So, and thank you, uh, Vice Chair for recognizing me. If we, if we have the current time, um, for the position to be two years. And a parent does leave, the next parent that takes in, they would only carry on that the rest of the time allotted in that position? Or would they be granted an additional two years? That's what I'm just, I'm just a bit confused on how that's going to work out.
It could work out that.
Can you, I'm sorry, Rain, can you direct your question to someone specific?
My apologies, um, to whoever can answer it. Seems like everyone has some knowledge here.
It could be the two, two years. Because it says the term is for two years. So when you appoint somebody, even if a person doesn't fulfill their two years. If you appoint someone, um, because that person has to leave. Then that person is stepping in new, so they should be allotted two years as well because they're just starting out. That's the way I see it.
Has the board decided whether there were going to be cohorts or whether they're going to be staggered terms? Because depending on how the board moves forward, I think that may play a part into whether they complete the term. Of the person who's, uh, stepping down or whether they get their own two-year term.
I was under the impression that you had, you all had decided that we would just, um. They were basically, when you came in, you just completed two years. So that means generally speaking, it would be more of a cohort so that you have some history of what's been happening and how to operate. However, in instances like the vacancies that are being picked up now, they, their two years, they'll be beyond and then new ones will come in. So I think it's going to all sort of work out that people will be coming and going. But there will always be some people that have a little bit of history with the group. And I will say the policy itself, the current one, as well as the one that we're working on right now, says each member of the P C A C shall serve for a term of two years. Um, and then they may have, they are, they can serve for more, they can't serve more than two consecutive terms. So you could have a member on P C A C for four years if they are a parent. If they're a representative of a district who is a parent, that must be a parent.
And that's possible to get small people.
I do want us to just, out of, out of respect for everyone's time, I want us to just follow, um, decorum, which is that we will be acknowledged. So I appreciate the response. Um, Mrs. Welsh, I'm going to turn to, uh, Board Chair Mickens. Um, I'm sorry, I believe I need to go to Vice Chair Walker first and then I'll go to you.
Thank you so much. Just in the essence of time, we started this amazing meeting at five o'clock. I just want to make a recommendation that for things that are coming back to us, that we just move it up on the agenda. I just want to cast my vote so, because I, I'm at another event and I've got to go. But, um, I want to cast my vote to say I am in alignment with the vote that is currently on the floor that I feel like we're in discussion for right now, I believe. Um, that, um, Chair, uh, of the Policy and Governance Committee made and I seconded. So I just want to put my vote in for that. Um, and then secondarily, I also am in favor. So I could put my vote in for that in advance of us moving forward with action based on what we've talked about tonight. Is that okay for you to record that? It's just way past our time and I actually have to go, but I want to make sure that it's recorded for a vote, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty.
And I, before you leave, actually, um, before you leave, I think, okay. Well, I wanted to say, um, I think it might be better if we can vote on this one, um, amendment that's on the floor. And then maybe we can table the others after we have the policy updated. We can just have a list of motions that we'll vote on for P C A C so that we can all move forward there. I think we're going to continue to have discussions around various things, um, and aspects. So I wonder if we can move forward with the motion that's on the floor right now, the amendment, and then we'll have a future opportunity to have, um, where people, everyone's here. So we have a fair discussion about it again, and then we can vote on it as a full board committee and move forward with it. Um, um, so that was a thought, that's not a motion. Return to, um, Board Chair Mickens Murray.
Thank you. I won't take long. I just believe that it's important for this board to clarify in this policy. So that you don't find parents who have one expectation and then realize another. And, uh, Board Member, uh, Miller, uh, was correct. If it's in the policy, the law is very clear about when the board members have to leave this board. So your policy needs to be very clear about the terms that parents serve. So they are both, I, I think synonymous. So I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Mickens Murray. Um, I think we're on the fourth round, so we're gonna, um, and we'll keep it at a minute. Um, but we will, I will turn to, um, Chair Fields and then Board Member, um, Dr. Juanita Miller.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna call the question.
I was too.
Great. I think that's the perfect idea. Um, so can you, and you're amending the original, um, uh, the original motion that, um. Vice Chair Walker made. So if you can just say you're amending it and then offer the specific, um, motion again, then I think we can vote.
I am amending, uh, the motion. And so the motion is that a representative on P C A C, uh, for a district. Must be a parent in alignment with the definition of a parent by the Prince George's County Public School System. In the event that a parent no longer satisfies that definition. The seat will be vacated and a new representative must be appointed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, as I move then seconded, um, um, are there any objections? Okay, Cindy, can you do a, a voice count?
Yes.
Mr. Philz?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Dr. Jay Miller?
Aye.
Miss Rivera Forbes?
Aye.
And ex officio, Dr. Mickens Murray.
She doesn't get the vote.
Yeah, I just.
I don't vote. I can speak. I do not vote. So make that clear. Thank you.
Great. All right. So it, um, has been voted on. It sounds like, uh, Mrs. Welsh, you have now direction around the recommendations. The one that fits the best with that amendment, that's the one we're going to move forward with as the adoption in the policy. Um, and so we will now move forward. So colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion? I think, um, we've kind of all, just through this discussion, agreed that we would like to have it one more time for, um, for the discussion. So Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy fifteen hundred. And bring it back to the next P and G meeting for further discussion. Uh, we're now going to move on to item four point nine, Policy fifty-one sixteen, Appeal Process of Student Transfer Request, which is a rescission. Um, I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Policy fifty-one sixteen, Appeal Process of Student Transfer Request.
Chair Briggs, sorry, Chair Briggs, I just wanted to know Dr. Z Miller is back.
Ah, yes. Um, can we move? Um, we tabled your discussion, Dr. Z Miller, um, and if we can move that to, I think we have just two more policies for discussion and then we will come back to yours after that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I've turned the floor to you, uh, Mrs. Welsh.
So the, um, this is, um, you'll see a memo from the superintendent requesting that this policy be rescinded. Because we already have, last year we worked on a policy forty-two hundred, Rules of Procedures and Hearings requested under six dash two oh two. And Appeals and Hearings under four dash two oh five of the education article, which goes into detail for how you would appeal. So a student, uh, transfer request, I'd appeal of that, the decision for that. Would go through the four two oh five appeal process, which we already have in policy. So there's no reason to have another policy that's now addressing all the little kinds of controversies that could be appealed. Uh, when we have one broad policy that's addressing, how do, how, how does that process work? And what do you do when you're appealing, um, a decision of, um, the superintendent to the board?
Great. Um, so the floor is now open for discussion and comments. Okay, um, colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion? Again, this is, um, Policy fifty-one sixteen, Appeal Process for, of Student Transfer Requests.
Vice Chair, I recommend that you, uh, move it for, uh, for, for action.
Okay. Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement, uh, the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on fifty, Policy fifty-one sixteen. And bring it back to the next P and G meeting, um, for action. Um, we're going to move to item four.
See, I'm sorry, can I, I actually, so in essence, you already got the, the memo from the superintendent. And so it's, it's, there's nowhere to go with it except to actually vote this, have it go forward for public comment.
Ah, okay, got it. Um, so then I will amend my initial, well, I don't have to amend anything because we didn't vote anything. So, um, Ms. Welsh, please take, please move forward with, uh, the, the next piece being, being to move it to public comment. Um, for further consideration, um, and then bringing it back, um, to the board for further discussion after the public comment, correct?
So we do need a motion and.
We do.
A second as well.
So that we can then go right over to the board's agenda.
Okay, got it. Um, so would anyone like to make that motion?
So Vice Chair, I move that we, uh, move this item, um, for public comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, uh, so, um, Mrs. Welsh, um, please move, proceed, uh, accordingly, based on that vote. Okay, um, so now you, uh, we're going to move to item four point ten, Policy fifty-one thirty-one point one, Bus Conduct. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Policy fifty-one thirty-one point one, Bus Conduct.
Okay, Cindy, could you please post that policy? Okay, so this policy, um, what had a little bit of language about, um. If you don't behave on the bus, basically you're, you're going to go through a discipline process. It was very short little policy. So I, uh, put in the policy language, um, basically, I, I put language in about the fact that we absolutely want. Uh, when we're transporting students, uh, to and from school, that we first of all want them to, uh, you know, behave in courtesy. Uh, and in consideration to each other and with respect to each other. Um, and that we're not going to tolerate any kind of disruptive, uh, behavior or bullying actions, anything that would compromise. Uh, the safety of students and drivers and attendants on the bus. And then the second piece has to do with expecting fair and consistent trauma-informed equitable application of behavioral interventions. And disciplinary action. Uh, so could you, um, scroll down, Cindy? And so that is just to ensure that, um, we want to make sure that we are, that we're being equitable. When we are, are, uh, you know, giving, uh, disciplinary action or having a disciplinary response to some behavior that does occur on the bus. But, and also then making students realize that this policy is saying that, you know, riding on a bus, uh, school bus is a privilege. And it can be denied, um, if you're going to jeopardize the safety of the operation of the school bus, the students on the bus. And the safety of the bus driver and the attendant. So the, the policy itself is to provide guidelines for appropriate student conduct on the bus. And then disciplinary actions addressing inappropriate behavior traveling on the bus. So if you scroll down, Cindy. We then have, keep going. We then have, uh, definitions, um, for audio visual, visual education, F R P A and personally identifiable information. So the reason I have audio visual is because we actually have a, uh, A P that talks about, uh, that we actually do audio visual recordings. On the bus. And if a student, let's say they initiate a fight or they're bullying someone or whatever. And, and some, or someone alleges that that's occurred, we can pull the videos and look at them. And it gives us the results of what the, um, it tells us what actually happened on the event, on the bus. Um, there, there, the, it's in conjunction with also the cameras that sit outside of the bus that pick up people who don't bother to stop when the school bus stops. So, uh, it's, it's a combination. But anyway, the, um, and what's important though, in knowing about the audio visual. Audio visual piece of this is that once we have recorded something and we're now, and so we have, let's say, two students that have engaged in fighting. Then that becomes an educational record, um, because, uh, especially if we're going to be using it for some like disciplinary action. As evidence in some type of disciplinary action. And so that, that then engages F R P A because those protections kick in. Because the, uh, what's been recorded is considered personally identifiable information. So that is why you see those definitions in the definition section. And then if you go down to standards, if you, uh, scroll down, Cindy. It just says this, the superintendent, uh, scroll up just a tad. The superintendent will be the one responsible or is designated for identifying the, uh, behavioral expectations for waiting for the bus at the bus stop. Boarding the bus, being transported on the bus and exiting the bus. Because in each one of those scenarios, there have been situations of, you know, that have caught need, there's been a need for disciplinary action. Based on something that happened, uh, those situations. Um, and, uh, we do have the, um, Student Code of Conduct and the student, um, Rights and Responsibility Handbook that does address this. And then it talks. And then it talks about that this, the superintendent will provide training to school staff, bus drivers and attendants on how to establish clear and common understand of expectations for student behavior for waiting on the bus at the bus stop, boarding the bus, being transported, exiting the bus. And then the school administrators are responsible for providing students training annually on the behavior expectations for those four things. So it's sort of addressing the whole training process and then if you proceed further Cindy. So then there is language in there, it talks about the fact that, that students that are transported on the school bus will be subject to audio visual surveillance. And so another piece of this is notifications. So in that administrative procedure, and I put it in the policy, we do notify, we wanna make sure student staff, the public, the parents, whatever are notified. And so the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook actually contains a notice that talks about the fact that there that there's audio visual recordings or surveillance, I should say. The PG C P S website has a piece of it on it and then on the buses that have the cameras, there's signs posted when you get on the bus that says that the bus is equipped with audio visual surveillance cameras. So we are giving notice to students, parents, public, staff. And then, and actually I do believe that for staff even, we have it in the Employee Code of Conduct too. Anyway, then an audio visual recording that is directly related to a student, and this is what I had said previously and is being maintained by PG C P S and this is just because of some disciplinary action then it has to be maintained in accordance with the F R P A, Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. And then if you proceed further, it talks about the fact that if, if there is necessary to have disciplinary responses, they have to be done in accordance with the Student Code of Conduct and then if you proceed further. Cindy, can you scroll up please? Okay, and that talks about making sure due process is in place and that the principal has written documentation by the referring adult. So there is not a lot of detail in this, but this is actually picked, will be picked up in an A P that title detail the different steps related to this. That, but I did put a section in here that says if the disciplinary response for a student who has violated the Student Code of Conduct is a request to remove a student from a school for a period of time longer than ten days, then the student or their parent guardian may appeal the extended suspension. So, and this is in, this is a setup on, in your, you have a policy five one one five who actually, that actually gives details about that appeal student, appeal disciplinary action. And then we have an accompanying administrative procedure that also provides more detail. So then if you proceed further down, and then it just says that the superintendent is authorized to develop administrative procedures. So that, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Hey, so colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion?
As the Vice Chair, I recommend we move this for, for, for action.
Okay, are there any objections? Alright, so Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy fifty one thirty one point one and bring it back to the next Policy and Governance Meeting for action. We're gonna move on to item four point eleven, Bylaw ninety two seventy one, Student Board Member. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Bylaw ninety two seventy one, Student Board Member.
Okay Cindy, would you please post that one please? So, so as we, as you scroll down and we were at the last time I shared with you, I'm still waiting to get information on dual enrollment from academics. So I did find out that, so first of all, I did, I, the school system has a, has a M O U with Prince George's Community College and, and it's related to dual enrollment. And what it talks about is the fact, first of all, that the PG C P S will pay the tuition for credit-bearing dual enrollment courses for all students. In addition, they will pay tuition, college institution fees and textbooks for any farm-eligible students. So I think there was a question at one point in the discussion related to this policy about who would pay and so it's already a practice that we pay for all students who are in dual enrollment. And then the other piece that I am, that why I'm telling you this is because it goes to what I found out from academics. So Prince George's Community College though is responsible, they retain the full and complete authority over its curriculum offered for dual enrollment, as well as policies and procedures. So then I did get noticed back from academics related to whether that's even a possibility. And they said that at this point, we, they, they do not have an equivalent course that has equivalent coursework that would qualify for translating that into a course to get academic credit. And they could not move forward. And so then I asked the question, well, couldn't you make one? Just because it's so, I mean, it is a unique experience and there's a lot of responsibility that goes with it. And at this point, I did not really get a clear response. And I sent an email, which I had, didn't get any response to say, well, if University of Maryland would not, I mean, not the University of Maryland, but if Community, Prince George's Community College is not willing to work with us on this, what's the possibility of looking at either Bowie State or University of Maryland? And they have yet to get back to me on that. So I will follow up with them. But I think, and what they, what they, what Chief Judy, Judy White said was, what we could do is give it a weighted high school credit. But I know that what you're looking for is the dual enrollment. So I can keep working to proceed to, you know, keep bugging them to see if we, if there's any other alternative to try to get as a dual enrollment course. I, I, I understand what they're saying though, if it's a college, if the college is saying this is, this is, you know, it's our arena to determine what the curriculum is or what courses, then, you know, we don't have a whole lot of control over the college. So, but maybe another college would be willing, I don't know. So I can, I can follow up with them. And then the other thing, if you scroll down Cindy. So there was conversation about what is good, if a student needing to be in good standing for a scholarship or whatever. So actually, when I was reading through, so we also have a dual enrollment administrative procedure and then when I was reading through the actual, this M O U, they actually talk about any student that's even, like, is available, is allowed to take a dual enrollment course, which is sort of the same idea when you're thinking about good standing as you're moving forward to get a scholarship, is that the student is considered to be in good standing when they possess a minimum two point five cumulative high school grade point average and meet the minimum college placement test score requirements. So I put, I put that into the policy so that it provides a little clarity. And then if you proceed further, Cindy, I don't see if there's any other changes. We had, that was from before, keep going. Wait, just a little bit. So this, this whole conversation about who's getting paid for what. So I, so the first one I didn't touch, which has to do with when there's the adult chaperone and there, and, and who, you know, who's, who is they can, making sure they get reimbursed for transporting the student and chaperoning the student, being, you know, staying, let's say it's a conference or something so they have to stay overnight and have a room and everything. And they, and it's just a matter of making sure there's appropriate documentation. Then as far as previously, we had the Student Board Member, shall receive local mileage-based reimbursement for the use of personal vehicle. And then the question came up, well, what about the adult who's transporting the Student Board Member to the board meetings? And so I just add the language, the adult transporting the Student Board Member shall receive local mileage-based reimbursement. And then there was this whole conversation, well, does it go to that person or does it go to the student or whatever? But the language here says, in accordance with the policies and reimbursement rates established for school system employees as well as reimbursement for the actual cost of items such as parking tolls. I feel like, and if you think differently, please let me know, but I feel like however, the, the details of how the person's getting paid, whether the student gets paid and then the student gives the money to the, to the adult transporting or the adult gets paid separately. I think as they go to submit, there's still, no matter what, there has to be documentation. And the person who is documenting that they transported the student, that does have to come from the person who is transporting. So I feel like that language would cover what's gonna happen because no matter what, once they submit the documentation, and, and I agree with Rain is that the, they already have a process in place. So I am certain that you just submit your, your documentation for reimbursement, probably all of you do this and there's a system and you just, and then you get reimbursed. So I, I, if you think we should put more detail into this, we can, but I think this will probably take care of it. And then scroll down a little bit more Cindy. This had to do with the scholarship. Which is, that was a conversation. Other than that, that's it. Those were the last changes.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. And I will start by recognizing Student Member Rivera Forbes.
Thank you Vice Chair. My first point of clarification I would make is I did see, Ms. Welsh, that you added in a two point five for good academic standing. However, overall to run for the Student Member of the Board position and sit in it, you have to have a three point O G P A or higher.
Okay, thank you.
And also I still stand by what I've stated before that mileage reimbursements should be up to the Student Member of the Board's discretion and between the Student Member of the Board and their guardian or parent and how it is distributed according to their situation. Because every Student Member of the Board's situation is different and how they might push out their mileage is also different according to them as well. So I think that should be respected.
Great, thank you.
My apologies. And one more thing, just for the scholarship wise, I was just wondering what is, I guess you would say the steps moving forward with that. I don't know how it's been done in the past. Like I said before, I know it's been something that has been there. So I'm wondering, is this something we're going to include in policy or is it not going to be included in policy?
That would be the committee's. Conversation. I do think, I do remember we did say that we, the, the conversation had to be about what would the scholarship be? And we did not come up with a number last time, so that would be something that would have to be included.
Okay, Chair Fields?
On the issue of credit inclusion and see for service as a S M O B, I think we should check with Bowie State and the University of Maryland because there's probably some entry first year political science course, whether it's in an American government that the student should get credit given their role as a public official in a public body. So I would just check with Bowie State or University of Maryland on that. On point number two, in terms of the reimbursement, just wanna remind that it would always be the person who legally must file the forms for reimbursement. So it's going to have to be the Student Member of the Board who receives that check and then that person will determine how they wanna distribute the check in terms of, because no one outside of the Board can submit a, they don't have a contract with the school district to submit reimbursement for expenses.
Great, thank you Chair Fields. So colleagues, should this policy be moved for action or kept for further discussion? I think we have the answer here, given the additional recommendations and also that Miss, Mrs. Welsh is still waiting to hear back about dual enrollment. So I think Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Bylaw ninety two seventy one and bring it back to the next Policy and Governance Meeting for further discussion. So we're now going to go to a tabled item, this was item four point O, which is an item for discussion. And as I mentioned, Doctor, Board Member, Doctor Zepor Miller is going to present. So we will proceed with a point of personal information where Doctor, Board Member, Zepor Miller will speak to Policy fifty one forty three, bullying, harassment or intimidation. And due to the fact that we have had a number of policies presented, we'll have three minutes for the first round, actually, we're gonna have two minutes for the first round and one minute for the second round, just to be mindful of responsibilities that others have. So I will turn it over to you, Doctor Zepor Miller.
Good evening, thank you so much Chair Briggs. I had mentioned bringing this to the Policy and Governance Committee because this year I have received numerous calls on bullying. And as we talked about it in our retreat, some of the staff members said if there was one call that they were, they received the most calls about, it is bullying. And in looking at the policy, I, I believe that as a board, we need to really dig deep into the policy and see whether we can enhance some of the requirements. One of the things that was cause for concern, and my computer is acting up, so I can't pull this up. But basically, there was one area and it was either in the policy or the A P Administrative Procedure where it does say that the parent of the, parent or the guardian of the alleged of, of the alleged offender may be invited to participate in the development of an intervention plan. And so that caused me some concern or a lot of concern because, you know, if there is a child who's being bullied, we owe the, the school community an opportunity to help the child who is actually engaging in the bullying or in the act of bullying. The, what, so the, the goal is to look at the policy to ensure that not only are we addressing the act of bullying, but also we addressing the, the behaviors and helping to provide an intervention plan for the student who is bullying other students so that they can get some help on how to self-regulate the behaviors as they mature in the school system. So my goal was to bring it forward for discussion and hopefully we can find, give some time for each board member to have an opportunity to look at it so we can have some robust conversation about, about some changes that we may wanna see to ensure that we are addressing the behavior of the individual who is conducting the bullying, involving the parents in the intervention so that we can start helping, helping the student, not just the one who's being bullied, which is very, very important, but the bullying has to stop. And so we need to ensure that we are taking some steps to help address the student who's doing the bully.
Hey, the floor, thank you so much, Doctor Zepor Miller. The floor is now open for discussion and comments. Okay, Chair Fields, recognize Chair Fields and then we'll go to Board Chair Mickens Murray.
I, I would just suggest you bring this back for a discussion before the committee at a future Policy and Governance Committee meeting.
Great, thank you so much Chair Fields for your recommendation. I will turn to Board Chair Mickens Murray.
Since you're going to bring this back, I support what Doctor Zepor Miller is saying. If we are about helping children, we need to help them to understand how to correct that behavior if we can. And if we're providing full services, wraparound services, then we should be able to do that. And Board Member Miller, I didn't hear you say, are parents going to be included in your recommendation for this work?
Yes, the, the administrative procedure actually does say may be invited, but really, the individual, the child is still a minor. And in order for us to help them correct the behavior, the parent needs to be engaged. So we need to change it to language such as it ensures that the parent actually comes in. Because many of the times when I'm getting the calls, sometimes the, the, the parent of the child who's being bullied is asking for mediation, but because this administrative procedure is saying may, the parent could say no and then they don't come in.
You're correct. So I appreciate that and I support your position and I will. And I will relinquish the floor, uh, Chair Briggs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Chair Minkins Murray. Um, okay, well, it sounds, sounds like this is a, a kind of agreement that we should move forward. And I think it's a, a really, um, great and important policy as well. Um, so colleagues, um, actually, not, not colleagues, but, um, Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made, um, tonight, um, by the Policy and Governance Committee for, and this is just for, we're gonna bring it back for further discussion. I'd like to work with you to, um, also kind of get additional board members', um, thoughts on the specific policy, Policy fifty-one forty-three, bullying, harassment, or intimidation, um, so that we can start to have a comprehensive discussion in future Policy and Governance Committee meetings about this. So.
So I'm sorry, so at this point, we're not actually making any changes. It's really more a discussion point.
Yes, a discussion, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with that. Thank you so much, um, um, uh, Dr. Isapura Miller. Um, before we move on to the next item, um, I.
Would that be at the next board meeting? Sorry, Chair. The next, um, Policy and Governance Meeting?
Um, the goal would be to have it at the next Policy and Governance Committee. If we have enough information and background on it, if there's additional pieces that Mrs. Welsh, I think we can leave that open, so it's not gonna be a hard rule here. But I, I think if the, the goal would be to have it at the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting in the new year.
So then, are you suggesting that I should be making changes to it, getting more information or what?
I would prefer that we have, once we get information from board members about.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you'll be able to have some content to work with.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Um, I recognize Dr. Isapura Miller.
Good evening. Thank you so much, and thank you so much for bringing it to the forefront, because I, um, I, I feel it's really important for us to work with the students. I wonder if it would be an imposition for us to also ask for, um, is, is it the Division of, some, a representative from the Division of Student Services to come and just talk us through some of the things that happened so that we are clear as we're making changes to ensure that we are making the changes that will reflect rehabilitation for the student who's doing the bullying and then also support for the student who's being bullied. Um, I'd like, i- if we're gonna make the change, I want us to be thorough in how we do it. Would that be an imposition to ask?
I, I can ask them, uh, at Student Services, so I would ask them if they could, um, do it now. We start in January doing every two weeks of committee meetings. So I, I, as, I might need to, they might not be able to come till like the end of January just because we come back from the holiday and it's already, you know, the timeframe's very quick. We're gonna be moving very quickly, so, um, but I can certainly ask to see if, I, I'm sure they would come and be willing to talk.
Yeah, um.
Would that be okay, Chair Briggs? Because I don't wanna impose.
I don't think it's an imposition at all. I would agree with Mrs. Welsh. I think if we can have some time to like figure out what they exactly do and what the recommendation is. So I think the recommendation you gave is the consideration. And then it's like, if it's like, oh, it's this other office or, you know, these other people. I think from there, we'll have this next meeting be that answer. So we'll have in a proceeding meeting, a discussion about who the right people are, bringing in the right people. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to item five point O, Items for Review or Action. There is one item for review or action. Um, this is five point one, Policy ninety-two fifty, Attorneys. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward Policy ninety-two fifty, Attorneys, to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment?
Remove.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Um, I would now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to give us an overview of Policy ninety-two fifty.
So, um, basically, ninety-two fifty is really in response to House Bill ten seventy-nine, which talked about the fact that if you, as a board member, are in a position where you need to defend, um, um, some action or something you have taken in your legitimate duty as a board member and not out of, uh, gross negligence or malice, that you, um, that you, the board will pay your, uh, fees. And so this policy does, um, provide for the fact that the board itself or will go through a process, through the RFP process to identify maybe, uh, like maybe five approved, um, attorneys, uh, at a rate of three hundred and fifteen dollars an hour that would, um, be, uh, used, it could be used to defend the person. And those rates would be, uh, free, would be paid. The big, uh, the big conversation we were having, um, had to do with this whole idea of a, a claim or a counterclaim. Um, I think we talked about this the last time. We did say that if in fact, there is a situation where you are, um, uh, as a, as a board member, you're on, you're on the defense because there's allegations against you, but in order to adequately defend yourself, you do need to then, uh, file a counterclaim. And in a sense, that puts you in a place, position when you're filing a counterclaim, that it would be only in that situation that you would have, um, that you would be, um, get your fees paid because you're really actually defending yourself. You did not initiate any claim against, uh, a board member. Um, and the other thing that we added was the counterclaim definition to make sure that we're clear about what we're talking about. And then, um, we did make one other change. If you go down to, scroll down one second, um, under gross negligence, just the, um, um, uh, Cindy, you're way back to definitions. Get back to definitions, please. Yes, so the other, so in addition to the language I was there, Gross, uh, also added, um, gross negligence is the blatant indifference to one's legal duty, other's, uh, safety and their rights. Gross negligence is a heightened degree of negligence represented extreme departure from the ordinary standard of care. So that language was in, uh, incorporated. And then if you proceed down, um, further, Cindy, if you can just, um, this is just clarifying language, uh, yep. I think that's it. I'll further, further tease, uh-huh, yes. Keep going. This is all language that was there before, so, um, keep going.
I think that's it. This was the only change.
The big issue had to do with the counterclaim when you're actually filing a claim against someone, but it's the only, you're only doing it because, uh, to defend yourself. So that's it.
Yeah. All right, so colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding Policy ninety-two fifty to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment? Um, and I will yield to, um, Board Member, Dr. Wainia Miller.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Welch for those clarifications. And I'd like for you to emphasize to this committee, as well as next, at our next meeting, uh, that section that deals with litigation that specifically states litigation and, uh, defense. Well, you defined the defense, but we didn't get into litigation, and that's clearly, uh, spelled out. So I just wanted to make sure, um, it goes on record that litigation is a part of ten seventy-nine. Am I correct, Ms. Ms. Welch?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And we do have a define, it's in the policy, and we do have it defined also.
Yes, I know, but, uh, at a meeting, it was, um, uh, um, well, you've clearly defined it, and, um, I'm, I'd just like for it to be reiterated to the board because I believe at one meeting, uh, it was, uh, it appeared that we would be given misinformation in reference to what litigation and defense meant in this bill and what the plater's intent was. So that, that's, I just want, I want to go on record as saying that, bringing that to the attention of, uh, board members.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Wainia Miller. Um, and there's a motion on the floor, so the motion is, um, colleagues, are there any objections to forwarding Policy ninety-two fifty to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment?
So, are you taking a vote?
Yes, it'll be a vote. So if there are no objections, hearing none, the motion passes, uh, and the policy will be moved to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. So we're gonna move on to item six point O, Committee Recommendations, New Business and Governance, and by which there are none. Um, and we'll move on to item seven point O, Follow-ups and Next Steps. Um, so as, uh, for seven point one, follow-ups, follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on Board Docs upon receipt. Item seven point two, Next Steps, the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, January sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, five P M. This meeting will be virtual. Please check the PGCS Board webpage for more information. And, um, we're now gonna move on to item eight, eight point O, Closing Remarks from the Chair and Adjournment. Um, so, um, item eight point one, Closing Remarks, permit. Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone, um, for a great meeting, um, truly for meaningful discussions, policies. If you're in the public and you stuck with us this entire time, we really appreciate it. And we, um, are just, uh, looking forward to, um, all the many ways we can continue to collaborate and really work to serve our students in our school district. Um, and colleagues, are there any additional, is there, are there any additional business to bring before the committee this evening? Um, and I will.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may.
Yes, I will recognize, uh, Chair Fields, and then I'll go to Student Member Rivera Forbes.
I just want to take this, uh, moment to thank my colleagues on this committee, uh, for their service. I enjoyed serving with you, um, as a member, um, of the Board of Education. Uh, this being my last, um, meeting as a member of the Board of Education. I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Adeline, uh, because she puts in tremendous work to make sure that these meetings, uh, run smoothly. Ms. Welsh, for her continued guidance, uh, counsel, uh, Mr. Whitley. Um, it's been a privilege to serve, first as Vice Chair and then Chair of this committee. I think we've done a lot of good work. I look forward to more good work being done, uh, by this committee going forward. Um, and I plan to be an active citizen, um, of Prince George's County, uh, and, and staying involved. And I just encourage the public, always keep our children first. Uh, that is the most important thing, uh, that we can do. We have an excellent school district, I mean, on our way to greatness. So, uh, with that, thank you, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you so much, Chair Fields, for, for that, and you will be missed and, and, and just all the contributions that you've made. Um, and I think it goes without saying that, you know, doing something like serving on a school board is not something that you necessarily have to do. And so I think whenever we can get people who are committed and interested, um, that, that's a, a great thing. So we really appreciate your partnership. Um, I'll turn to Student Member of the Board, Rivera Forbes.
I just wanted to publicly acknowledge you, um, Board Member Fields. I have loved working with you, um, in my couple of months of being on the board. It has been an amazing experience, and you've been a great mentor. I'm so excited that I got to say I had served on the board with you. You're definitely gonna be missed, and I just want you to remember that you're, you're always valued. And no matter where you go, I know you're going to represent and advocate for what's best for the students, and I really appreciate you for that. So thank you.
Great, um, and, uh, you won't be too far. You'll be in Morgan State, and who knows, you might be bumping into each other there, so. We really.
And that's where, that's where Student Member of the Board is gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm claiming that tonight.
Um, well, so, uh, so hearing, um, well, thank you again for all the comments that have been shared. Um, so may I have a, a motion to adjourn the December nineteen, two thousand. Meeting, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, um, any objections? Hearing none, the time is now nine oh eight P M. This meeting is adjourned. And I hope that you all have an amazing holiday break, um, are safe, healthy, and get to spend time with the people that are most important to you. Um, thanks again if you stuck with us, and have a great evening.
Thank you, you do.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. Can't get out.